Okay, it's seven o'clock. Do we have everybody on?
It looks like all council members are online.
Okay, then why don't we have a roll call?
All right, Councilmember Snyder. Councilmember Snyder, are you present?
Might give it a minute, Elaine. It might be because everybody's just...
All right, Councilmember Holliver. Councilmember Fang.
Here.
Vice Mayor Pappen.
Here.
Mayor Aliva.
Here.
Councilmember Snyder.
Here, sorry, my mute button is really acting up today. I am here.
All council members are present.
Perfect. Can we stand for the pledge allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, I'm pulling up your notes, Elaine. Give me a second. Give me one second here. My internet is a little bit loading. Here we go. I tried to do this before we started, so bear with me, guys. All right, we have ceremonial presentations, and we have a proclamation recognizing the Juneteenth National Freedom Day. On January eighteen sixty-three, President Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation, setting in motion the end of slavery in the United States. And on June nineteenth eighteen sixty-five, more than two years after the Emancipation Proclamation was signed...
Madam Mayor, can we please mute everybody else? Somebody's got some background files.
Is everybody good? Juneteenth has been celebrated since eighteen sixty-six, representing a crucial turning point in American history. As those who were formerly enslaved were recognized for the first time as citizens, African-Americans came to commemorate Juneteenth with celebration across the country. And this date is a tribute to the African-Americans who fought so long for freedom and worked so hard to make the dream of equality reality, and celebrates the successes gained through education and greater opportunity. And Juneteenth commemorates African-American freedom and achievement, while encouraging continuous self-development and respect for all races, as it takes on a national, symbolic, and global perspective and appreciation for all cultures. And whereas citizens of Millbrae and everywhere across the nation should continue to recognize the importance of inclusion for all races, ethnicities, and nationalities, and work together towards equality and equitable, expanding cultural, economic, education, and career opportunities for all. Now, therefore, we, the members of the Millbrae City Council, do proclaim June nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, as Juneteenth National Freedom Day, and urges all citizens to become aware of the significance of this celebration in American history and the heritage of our nation-state. We have somebody that is going to accept this proclamation?
Mayor, we did reach out to the Samatelle County NAACP, and unfortunately, they had another engagement tonight, and they were not able to attend the meeting.
Okay, well, we'll make sure that we get it to them.
Yes.
Then we have a condemnation recognizing PAC three fifty-five Cubmaster Mark Ruckelman. Ruben, did you want to do this one? Councilmember Holliver?
Sure.
Perfect.
Whereas Cubmaster Mark Ruckelman joined PAC three five-five with his older son in twenty-twelve, immediately stepped up to serve as den leader until twenty-sixteen, when he became the assistant cubmaster. And whereas in twenty-seventeen, his second son joined the PAC, and Cubmaster Ruckelman continued to rise through the ranks, serving as cubmaster for the past five years. And whereas during his decade-long tenure, Cubmaster Ruckelman accomplished many outstanding achievements. He helped bring scouting to approximately two hundred Millbrae youth and their families. Whereas Cubmaster Ruckelman continued the PAC three five-five distinguished speaker series throughout the pandemic, ushered in the first girls to join Cub Scouts in Millbrae. And whereas Cubmaster Ruckelman actively encouraged scouts to be involved in civic events, including the city's annual Earth Day and holiday celebrations, as well as the Millbrae School District events. And whereas, he also arranged for visits and demonstrations from local law enforcement, including a visit to the San Francisco International Airport Coast Guard Station. Whereas Cubmaster Ruckelman introduced scouts and their families to experiences ranging from night hikes in Millbrae to camping in Pinnacles National Park, and established the annual Pinewood Derby as the PAC's marquee event, with awards presented by the mayor. Whereas, the city of Millbrae recognizes Cubmaster Ruckelman for his leadership and dedication to PAC three five-five and the community, and congratulate him on his retirement. Now, therefore, we, the members of the Millbrae City Council, do hereby congratulate and commend PAC three five-five Cubmaster Mark Ruckelman for ten years of dedicated service, and extend our best wishes as he embarks on his new term.
Thank you, Councilmember. Mark, are you on this?
I am. Thank you. I am touched and honored to be recognized. And I sincerely thank the Millbrae leadership for the recognition. And it is with a heavy heart, I bid adieu to the PAC and take a little bit of a break before possibly becoming involved in Boy Scout Troop three five-five. But thank you all very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you for your work. Councilmember Snyder, do you have a comment?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Ruckelman, I just want to say thank you. We've worked on projects together. I adore your scouts. They are always the highlight of the activities around Millbrae. Thank you so much for your leadership, and good luck with a nice rest.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Seattetown County Mosquito and Vector Control District update.
Hello, everybody. This is Mohammed Baloum. I am the trustee of the city of Millbrae at the mosquito and vector control district. I'm here to present our district manager, Brian Weber. He's been at, as the district manager for the last almost two years. And he, Brian, he worked at the districts from two thousand and five. He started as seasonal catch basin driver and moved through the ranks. And eventually, two years ago, he took the helm of the district manager. And he's doing a really great job at the district. And I would like to present some of the presentation about the district, the work, and also how it's contributed to the city of Millbrae. Go ahead, Brian.
Yeah, thank you, Mohammed, and good evening, everyone. As Mohammed mentioned, I'm the district manager of Samatell County Mosquito and Vector Control. I'm just going to give a brief overview of district services and some of those specific to Millbrae. And next slide. Or can I, okay. So briefly, I want to take a step back here to the originations of the district. Our mosquito-controlled district is actually one of the oldest in California, and not only in California, the nation. This slide right here, I'll read some of it, was made by an entomologist from Berkeley back in nineteen oh four, when individuals were looking to develop the peninsula. But they said that mosquitoes would gather so abundantly on one's clothes that sometimes the color of the suit was almost obscured beneath the general effect of the light brown produced by the marsh mosquito. So therein, that started the district that is now over a hundred years old, and started the control methods and also some of the legislation that gave us the ability to protect public health. Next slide. So who are we? We are an independent special district founded by property taxes. This is our staff as of about a year ago. You can see we have some pretty interesting equipment displayed here. The airboat is to access islands at low tide where that marsh mosquito that we were originally granted control powers for, we use that to access islands out in the bay. And quickly, I'd like to read our mission, and that is to safeguard the health and comfort of the citizens of Samatell County through a planned program to monitor and reduce mosquitoes and other vectors. Next slide. So how are we paid for? I briefly touched on it as property taxes, but this goes a little more in depth. As you can see, the light brown portion on the left side of the map of Samatell County, that's the newer part of our district. But the original district, and that includes Millbrae, you can see is the darker portion. And you know, that work has been going on officially since, you know, about the early nineteen-tens. So the other part, the lighter part, the coastal area and the southern parts of the county, was just absorbed about twenty years ago. Next slide. Okay, so this is a quick overview of some of our core services. We do offer more, but these are main services that are utilized by the public. And I will touch on them a little bit more in depth with each slide. But you can see mosquito control is our main one. This image here on the right, as many of you have probably seen, this is our catch basin program. And here in Samatell County, there's a lot of flat area that was built on that very marsh that produced mosquitoes. And so with that, because of seismic settling and the infrastructure on top of marsh fill, we do get a lot of water in the storm drains that sit there year-round. So we do have eight Jeeps that you probably see driving around, and that's one of the most critical components to our control program. Next slide. So briefly, not to bore everyone, but a little bit about mosquitoes. Here are the four general cycles you see, the egg, starting on the bottom right. Mosquitoes can lay up to two hundred and fifty eggs at one time. So you can imagine just one female mosquito, how many mosquitoes that could lead to if left uncontrolled. And then next, you see the cycles all the way through to adult. On the right side, you see typical areas where our technicians and staff find mosquito breeding. As previously mentioned, the drains. Here we have a seasonal freshwater marsh, rain gutters. And something we often see is those containers that filled up with rainwater over the winter, and then they stand there into the spring and summer and develop mosquitoes and create a good habitat for them to breed. Next slide, please. Okay, so mosquito surveillance and control, just a brief overview here. So we do have various control methods. As I mentioned, mosquito fish. The district will distribute. Any resident can call or come to the district to get mosquito fish. We do often distribute them to ornamental ponds, abandoned swimming pools, or any backyard water features that can support them. And these fish can persist for ten, fifteen, even twenty years sometimes without... So they make it for no pesticides necessary. They eat all the mosquito larvae and anything else existing in the water. So they only are for ornamental ponds. They're not put in natural waterways. You can see some other control methods. In the lower left, that's a tulie area where it's really dense vegetation. So we use a biorational larvicide, which is specific to mosquitoes, and dilute that product, put the bacteria directly into the water, and it will get into the water column and only kill the mosquito larvae in even the most sensitive habitats. On the left-hand side, this is what we call surveillance, or that's what leads our technicians to all of their decisions. So in the bottom right, on the left side, you'll see a container, it looks like an igloo container hanging with a net, that collects adult mosquitoes overnight. And by putting one of those out, our technicians look at the number of mosquitoes we see overnight and what type of mosquito. So believe it or not, there's some twenty-something mosquitoes that we do monitor, although there are only five to seven that we typically see in the county. There are, like I said, in excess of twenty. So by putting those traps out, we look at abundance and species, and that gives us an indication of how big of a problem is occurring and actually what water and habitat types to look at. And just on the left-hand side, that's just one of our technicians dipping one of those salt marshes that is along the back. Next slide. Okay, so this is a slide specific to Millbrae. And although most of Mills Field, which many of you probably know, is the airport property across the one oh one from the San Francisco International Airport, that is a big open space, but some of it does touch Millbrae. So on a yearly basis, because of access issues and that dense vegetation, we often have to use a helicopter. And what we do is we apply those biorational larvicides. The helicopter drops the granules down directly into the water, and that way, we can proactively control mosquitoes that are of public health significance and can transmit West Nile virus. One item to note is the district has purchased and is currently working on certification to use a UAS, or many people know it as a drone, to do these applications. So hopefully, we're looking to transition from a helicopter to a less noisy UAS to do these applications and without outsourcing that work. Next slide. Okay, so you saw the earlier slide about our core services. So here are some items we have. We do yellow jacket control. We also do wasp control. So if a resident can identify where the yellow jacket hive is, our staff will come out and eradicate that nest. You'll also often see wasps on the eaves of your home, and that's an invasive paper wasp, typically native wasps. They will not breed in residential areas. They're highly unlikely. So if you do see a wasp nest hanging from your eaves, you're welcome to call the district, and we will control those wasps for you or the yellow jackets. Rodents is one of the great services we provide. So often, we find residents, they'll call a pest control operator. The district acts as an independent third party where we can do an evaluation of the property and what the district's goal is. In that evaluation is, any resident who calls will get a customized report, identifying attractants in the backyard, and most importantly, entry points where rodents are getting inside the home. So anytime there's rodents getting inside the home, not on the backyard fence or cutting through the property, but inside the home, that's where they do become past public health significance. And our technicians will give a customized report, identifying all the areas that the homeowner would need to improve to prevent rodents from getting in. They can also provide that to a pest control operator to do that work as well. And then you see the word identifications. There are some, there's a tick and a cockroach. So the district offers free insect identification. We can either pick them up from the residents, or they can come here to district headquarters at thirteen fifty-one Rollins Road, and our staff will identify them. We often see residents getting mystery bites, and they are not mosquito-related. And often, we'll find they could be bird mites, rat mites, or other insects of public health significance, in which that identification can lead to our technician going out there and diagnosing the problem so it can be resolved. Next slide. Okay, disease surveillance. So I showed you how staff was looking for adult mosquitoes and mosquitoes in the marsh. I just quickly want to go through, you can see the West Nile virus transmission cycle. Obviously, in California, and specifically in Samatell County, West Nile virus is of public health significance. We do an enormous amount of surveillance, setting those traps out. We have an in-house laboratory who can test for West Nile virus and other diseases, so we can respond quickly if there's a public health threat. Just quickly, on the right-hand side, you see a little map that says invasive eighties mosquitoes. So a while back, you might have heard in the media the word Zika virus. So Zika virus cannot be transmitted by our native mosquitoes. The reason invasive eighties mosquitoes are important to public health because, as in their name, they are invasive. But these invasive eighties mosquitoes, they're a tropical mosquito. They can transmit new diseases that our native mosquitoes cannot, including Zika virus, dengue, yellow fever, and some others. We did have an introduction of this mosquito in Menlo Park in around twenty-ten. And to date, in California, we are the only control program and district that was able to successfully eradicate the invasive eighties mosquitoes. So to date, the state health department has determined that we are at an eradication status. But as you can see in the map, these mosquitoes started in the southern part of the country, and they worked their way up through California. So, next slide. Okay, and then, of course, there's community education. This was our display most recently at the Samatell County Fair. You can see in the bottom left, our public information officer doing a presentation. I saw previously the den leader that put ten years of service in. We do an enormous amount of work talking about tick and tick removal to the Cub and Boy Scouts. So anytime that you have a group or interested party that wants more information about any type of vector, vector-borne disease, or a presentation, you're welcome to call the district, and we're happy to come out and present on any insect or vector of public health significance, or just an overview of district services like this one. Next slide. Okay, and here's a Millbrae-specific, just a quick snapshot of the services that occurred in two thousand and twenty-one. So you could see forty-five service requests of those. About nineteen were mosquito, ten were rodent. But the big item is, if you look at the bottom section, three hundred and seventeen mosquito sources. What that means is, we have a geospatial database that identifies any water source that's bred mosquitoes. And the technicians work with the property owner to try and reduce or eliminate those. If not, we use those biorational control methods to control mosquitoes on private property. And last year, we did over a thousand inspections in Millbrae alone, and those resulted in two hundred and sixty of those biorational applications. Next slide. Okay, so I'm happy to take any questions. I would urge anyone, if you're getting mosquito bites or experiencing anything that I previously mentioned in my presentation, like I said, rodent inspections, raccoons, skunks, any critters that you're uncertain about or you're getting bites, please call the district. There's no cost for any of our services. And we can come out and give you that customized report, or in the instance of mosquitoes, identify where they're breeding and eliminate that water source.
Councilmember Snyder.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. And thank you for the slides on our east side. That was lovely, and I may want to follow up with you afterwards. Question, we have a number of homes that sit vacant a good number of months over the year. Pre-COVID, they might be going on holiday for a month or so. I know I've got a lot of standing water in the backyard. So I'm going to go out there and do my job to empty out all that standing water. But if you think the house next door to you may have some standing water, what do you do?
So yeah, that's a great question. Absolutely. We also take anonymous calls. So something that sometimes we work with, there are code enforcement officers, but our technicians, if we get a call and are given an address, we go there, offer the homeowner an inspection, offer them information. Quite often, you know, we gain access to the property, and we are able to employ those control methods or work with the homeowner to resolve them. And that goes for any of the vectors that I mentioned in an effort to reduce them.
And I know it was in your slides, but just to remind the public, if they see a dead bird, what should they do?
Yeah, absolutely. So there is the West Nile virus hotline. So I always say the easiest way really is to Google West Nile virus hotline, California. However, you can also just call the district. We always have a live person answer the phone, and they can get that dead bird in the system and get you either pointing in the right direction, but get one of our technicians also out there to inspect to see if maybe there's any other thing of concern. But dead birds, I didn't go deep into it, but dead birds are one of the best indicators for us of West Nile virus, an early indicator of West Nile virus in an area. So it's extremely important that the public does report those. So thank you for that.
Thank you. I love our blue jays. They've kept us amused during COVID, but they are one of the early birds that can get it. So thank you so much. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Yeah, thank you very much again. Any commonality with gophers? Because, you know, if we register the gophers to vote, we're going to have a whole new population.
Yeah, so typically, gophers are known as an agricultural pest. However, just like with any pest, and we pride ourselves on if a resident has a call, you know, our technicians are very skilled, and they will come out and advise you on some of those control methods. Quite often, I would just say that they're not the easiest pest to control. So you know, there is the possibility you can do it on your own, but we quite often find that residents ultimately turn to a pest control operator because they are fairly pesky and difficult. But someone can call the district for gophers, and we can at least give advice on the appropriate methods to control or attractants and so on.
Thank you. That would be great, because they become a tripping hazard and a whole bunch of other stuff, too. So thank you much.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Mohammed, nice to see you.
Thank you very much for, councilmembers, and Mayor, for being so willing to present the district. And again, if you guys have any concern regarding this control, please contact our district. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, city manager, we're going to go to the agenda overview next.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Good evening to you. Good evening, City Council. Tom Williams, city manager. In terms of the agenda review, we have our calendar of events and reports of bills and claims. We have approval of the meeting minutes for April twelfth, the special meeting, the regular meeting of April twelfth, the special meeting of May twenty-fourth, and the regular meeting of May twenty-fourth. We have no reports from city committees or commissions this evening. Then we move into public communication. This is an item on the agenda that anyone from the public can address the city council on any item not on the agenda. The public is limited to three minutes in their comments to the city council. Then we move on to the consent calendar. We have six items on the consent calendar, starting with item number five, which is the adoption of a resolution finding the proclaim, "State of emergency continues to impact the ability to safely meet in person." Item number six is approval of the library parking lot closure and fee waivers for the Japanese cultural festival scheduled for October second, two thousand and twenty-two of this year. Item number seven is to waive the second reading and adopt an ordinance amending the zoning map pursuant to the Millbrae Municipal Code Title Ten, planning and zoning to change the zoning district for the property at nine nine eight Larkspur from open space to single-family residential. Item number eight is consider resolution authorizing city manager to execute a community benefit agreement with the Millbrae Adrian Science Park. This is the Longfellow Project located at two ten Adrian Road. Item number nine is to consider resolution adopting a list of projects for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three, funded by Senate Bill One, that's the gas tax for road repair and Accountability Act of two thousand and seventeen. Item number ten is to consider resolution adopting the city of Millbrae Local Roadway Safety Plan. We're recommending that we just remove this from the agenda this evening. This item will not be heard, and we'll bring it back to a future city council meeting. So we're requesting that we remove item ten from the calendar. Then we move into public hearings. Item number eleven is the first public hearing item, and that is to consider approval of a single-family residence at nine nine zero Larkspur Drive. And that is to consider approval of a single-family residence at 990 Larkspur Drive. Item number 12 is to conduct a public hearing for wastewater rate changes for the fiscal year 2022, 2023. Through fiscal year 26, 27, and the future wholesale water rate pass-throughs. And this would be an adoption of a resolution with the updated sewer rates for the future wholesale water rate increases and pass-through. Item number 13 is declaration of emergency of a water shortage that we must enact stage two. Of the water shortage contingency plan by the state of California and SFPUC. Item number 14 is to receive the proposed capital budget for fiscal year 22, 23. And that's then we move to new business. Item number 15 is to consider resolution supporting the multi-jurisdictional bicycle sharing program and application of San Mateo County Transportation Authority for Measure A funds. For congestion relief and Measure W funds for transportation man management program funding. Item number 16 is a informational report on our water supply and demand assessment. This is a new annual report required by the state of California. And a preliminary report submitted to the State Department of Water Resources. By the end of June. With that, Mayor, I would like to make some adjustments if the city council would agree. I would like to move item 13, which is the declaration of the emergency water shortage. And then act stage two, water shortage contingency plan. And then item number 16, the water supply and demand assessment preliminary report after item number 11. So after the public hearing, then we would hear item 13, then item 16. And then we would move back and then hear item 12, 14, and 15.
Sounds fine with me. Make maybe you can give us a little reminder when we get there too, how to do that.
Okay, all right. We just have some consultants and those two items kind of.
Absolutely. Yep, absolutely.
Okay, and then real quick, just a quick update on some things. We have another busy week, starting this Thursday is the kickoff of our downtown concert series known as Beach, Pries and Vines on Broadway. Between between Hillcrest, on the 300 block of Hillcrest, between Hillcrest and La Cruz. The events start at at 6:00 PM and the concert goes from 6:00 to 8:00. This is a free concert for the community or anybody in the region. We have local, local businesses, Bacchus Wines, Fiddler's Green doing the beer garden and wine tasting and also food from our local restaurant. So this Thursday on Broadway, between Hillcrest and La Cruz, the festivities, the band starts at 6:00, but festivity is really good going about 5:30. We also have a series of informational election workshops. Our first one is actually tomorrow night, starting at 6:00 PM, so it's 6:00 to 7:30. This will be held in library room A. And so with with the change in districts and and our election process here in Millbrae. We will be holding a series of in-person workshops to provide information and answer questions of the community. And again, the first meeting is is tomorrow night. Wednesday evening from 6:00 to 7:30, Millbrae Library Room A. The next scheduled event will be Saturday, so this Wednesday. And then immediately this next Saturday, June 18th, from 10:30 to noon. And then we will do one virtual workshop via Zoom on Wednesday, July 13th, 6:00 to 7:30. All this information is available on our website. And you can also contact our city clerk, Lane Tran, her telephone number 650-259-2414. Again, 650-259-2414, some additional information. This is this is walk-in, no sign-ups or registration is required. And then lastly, just in a couple of weeks is 4th of July. Wanted to remind everyone that fireworks, even safe and sane fireworks are illegal in the city of Millbrae. So just want to ask everybody to remain safe and not use fireworks in the city. Even the safe and sane are illegal in the city of Millbrae. So Mayor, that's just a brief update on the happenings here in the city.
Beautiful. Did you want to say how beautiful the grand opening was for the rec center too?
Yeah, well, I was gonna, I mean, so so much went on. I mean, it was a fabulous event. And I know some of the council members may may have some comments, but we did, we had a terrific grand opening of the long-awaited new recreation center. We had over 1,000 citizens participate on Saturday. We had the Lions, the Leos, Millbrae Cultural Committee volunteer for the Lion and Dragon Dance. We had our local as-is band play play music. And it was it was a terrific grand opening and so many people to thank. You know, on a project of this nature and and you know, as I always say, Jane Cow, our senior engineer, who is our project manager, did a fantastic job over the last couple of years. On the day in and day out managing Hanson Bridget and their attorneys as we shifted from design bid build to design build. McKinsey and her team in Recreation. And then our private sector, you know, team with ELS Architects and Block. And of course, the city council, the city council subcommittee, all the citizens that were involved in the programming and the design of the building. So it's really a great community barn building team effort. And we're happy to cut the ribbon on Saturday and have have the community enjoy it for years to come.
Did a beautiful job. Thank you to you and your staff and your experts. Vice Mayor, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, real quick. The primary election is over and if you have any election signs, they do are required to be taken down. By city ordinance, please call the candidate to come pick them up. They will recycle them or reuse them. We just can't have them all over the city. And secondarily, COVID testing is still available if anybody needs free tests. www.covidtest.gov, you can still get free texts. And finally, we have asked that the city look into this flavored tobacco issue. It did not make the agenda at this point in time. We are looking into it and hopefully we'll get it on an agenda in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. From there, I'd like to go to the approval of minutes, special meeting minutes of April 12th, 2022, regular meeting minutes of 2000, April 12th, 2022. Special meeting of May 24th, 2022, and regular meeting minutes of May 24th, 2022. Councilmember Snyder.
I'm happy to make a motion to approve all four, one minor edit that I sent to the city clerk on the April 12th. Just the addition of a word about she knows the section. It's under council comments. It's just an incomplete sentence. It's just correcting a sentence.
So we have a motion. We have a second. Can we call for the vote, please?
Councilmember Snyder.
Aye.
Councilmember Oliver.
Aye.
Councilmember Phong.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Papin.
Yeah, aye, sorry.
Mayor Aliva.
Aye.
The four sets of meeting minutes are approved with amendment to April 12th, 2020 regular meeting minutes by the vote of 5 to 0.
Thank you. We'll move to oral reports of which we have none tonight. And after that is public, public communication, anything that's not on the agenda that the public would like to speak on. Let me look. We have a couple of hands up. Okay, Joel, would you like to go up first?
Hey, can you guys hear me?
Perfect.
Okay, good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. If you can put yourself in my shoes for the next few minutes, I am hoping you can tell us what is going on. My name is Joel Timpano. We live at 321 Palm Avenue. My wife and I have raised our family in this house for the last 22 years. This is our dream home. We have applied for a permit to build an attached ADU and have hired an architect to come up with the plan that matched our existing architectural design of the house. That gave privacy to the ADU and gave privacy to our yard space. It was perfect. We have followed all ordinances and codes. We made sure of all heights and restrictions. We paid all the fleet fees and were issued a permit. We were so excited. We demoed our decks and pulled the stucco off our back walls, dug our footings, got our city inspections and special inspections, poured our concrete and started framing. On May 26th, we had a building building official show up and give us a stop work notice ordered by Millbrae City Manager Tom Williams. My guys offered to go over the measurements with Jake, the building official. And he said he was just doing what he was told and this is a planning issue. Upon reading the stop work order, I called Jake, the building official, and he confirmed that he was doing what he was told and I would have to go through the proper channels. So my wife and I went to the city hall and met with Roscoe Mata, the planning manager. We were told they had a typo in the ordinance and everyone involved had missed it. My architects, your planners, Christian and Sam, your building department and engineering. We could not believe our ears. We figured we had to go over their heads because this did not seem real. So we had a Zoom meeting with Darcy, Caveon, Christian, and our architect. We thought we now would get and understand a reasonable answer to why this has happened. Only to be more dismayed with Darcy's stand on you have to knock it down, including newly poured foundation, resubmit new plans and basically start over. She literally put her hands up and said, yeah, I don't know what to tell you. Your permit is no longer valid. What a gut punch. We have been sick for the last three weeks. In 37 years of being married, we have never been blindsided like this. Anxiety, stress, and financial issues. We are $150,000 into our project and they asked us to scrap it. I am begging you as a council to look into what has happened here and make this right. I have been asking for a building official to come out and go over any discrepancies with our project and make any necessary adjustments so we can pull the stop work order and resume. No one has responded to my request. Scrapping the project, starting over is not reasonable. We cannot handle this full weight on our shoulders. Can you imagine if you were in my shoes? We need your help. Thank you.
Thank you, Joel. Lisa? Timpano too, right? Did I say that right, Timpano? Lisa, you're you're on mute. Oh.
There you go.
We cannot hear you. Um, there you go. Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Hello and good evening. My name is Lisa Timponi. I live at 321 Palm Avenue. My husband and I are approximately 75% of the way through an attached ADU addition. We have an approved set of drawings and permit issued to us by the city of Millbrae on March 9th of this year. My husband and I spent a large part of last year driving back and forth to Calaveras County. Over two hours away to care for my father as he died a painful death from cancer. And my mother, who suffers with several health issues of her own. We were keenly aware that my mother would not be able to stay on her own once my father was gone. Because she did not want to entirely lose her independence, the idea of an ADU was born and we began the process. My father died on November 1st. All was going along great with construction until May 26th. We received a stop work order on our home stating, first city manager, construction to stop due to ADU height. Our construction crew was sent home and that was the beginning of a bewildering experience with the community development department. That night, as I stressed about it, I wondered how the city manager came to be involved with my ADU project. It was easy enough to determine that the city manager is my backyard neighbor. City manager Tom Williams requested that our plans be sent to him at some time on May 25th. By 11:18 PM that night, he orders city inspector Jake Gonzalez to place a stop work order on our project. His reasoning was that we were defining what we were defining as a crawl space was not actually a crawl space, but a first floor. This has no basis in fact, and how could he have possibly known this since he had never stepped foot on our property? Mr. Williams does not ask Mr. Gonzalez to stop by and take a look to make sure everything is correct. He directs him to shut us down. A pretty heavy-handed maneuver. After several frustrating days and attempted communication with the building and planning departments, we sat down with Roscoe Mata, the planning manager. And we read a portion of Millbrae's ADU ordinance that states, a detached ADU must have a plate height of no higher than nine feet. I almost shouted that our ADU is attached, not detached. He looked at me in the eye and said, that is a typo. That was supposed to say attached. So you are shutting down a project that I have already invested six figures in because of something you meant to say. The idea of dropping our unit to nine feet is not at all possible. We have no desire to fight with the city of Millbrae. I have lost much sleep and my stomach is in knots over this, over my mother's future and the severe financial loss we would experience if forced to adhere to an ordinance. That does not apply to us and was not part of Millbrae's ADU filing with the state of California. We do not want special treatment. We are just asking one of you to look at this chain of events through an unbiased, reasonable lens. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Gino, Timpano? Gino, you're on mute too. There you go.
Can you hear me?
We hear you.
Okay, awesome. Let me turn on my video real quick before you before you start me here.
Can you start the timer? Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, Millbrae City Council. My name is Gino Timpano and I am from the time I was 12, I lived in Millbrae. Although I was 12 when I'm when we moved, Millbrae has always felt like home. I grew up playing baseball in this town, was a trisport athlete when I graduated from Mills High. And although I could not afford to purchase a home in Millbrae, I was able to purchase one in San Bruno so I could stay close to home. My parents are Joel and Lisa Timpano and they live at 321 Palm Avenue. My mother and father are about as grassroots as you can get. Both grew up on the peninsula. Without much, but together have worked extremely hard to achieve everything they have. They're both truly my heroes. As you have already heard from a few parties now, they have started an ADU project at their home and have been stopped due to a complete misuse of power. You have already heard about this and my comment is directed toward each of our city council members and to inform the public at large. My parents have reached out to each of you and have only had one response. This seriously frustrates me as you all took an oath and are supposed to be representatives of the people. My parents are not ones to complain. They are a very active part of the neighborhood and are contributing members to their community. This is the first time either of them have had to reach out for assistance and for one of you to only respond after multiple attempts is very disheartening. Quite frankly, kind of gross. I do not understand how a project can go through any city building and planning departments. The tenants, and in this case, my parents, are able to put six figures into their home. And then a stop work order is placed on their home when they are in complete compliance of the permit that was issued? It seems as though there is no validation of the permit process whatsoever. I do not personally need to talk to any of you. But I do not think that is unreasonable for you to respond to my parents in this matter. Please give them a moment. That's all.
Thank you, Timpanos. I just want to say that we can't give you a moment at this time of the council meeting. And I apologize, personally apologize. I did not see an email, so I don't know where it ended up. And I I did not respond, but I purposely did not not respond. We will take action on this. We just cannot take any comments from any council members at this time with public communication. So if we are in our council chambers right now, we would be able to send you out with staff and we could have staff. Direct you to a meeting of some sort where one of us could attend or somebody could attend. But at this time, we will get back to you this week.
Yeah, Mayor, just real quick, I will say that, you know, it is unfortunate, the situation. It was referred to our community development director that's handling it. And any violation of the municipal code, even if it is the neighbor of the city manager, we have an obligation to report it, to research it. And you know, I can't play favorites, even if it is my backyard neighbor. We have an obligation for people to follow the rules and the adopted ordinance. There were errors in the architect's plans versus the site conditions and all sorts of things. But it is being handled through our community development director and through our building division. And the project is about 25% complete, not at best 25% complete, not 75%. So anyway, we are we are working through it and we'd be happy to facilitate meetings.
We will, we will get, we will get back to the Timpanos.
Okay.
You're all lying.
So I'm sorry. I don't know who's talking.
Me, you're a liar. Yeah, people need to have decorum or they'll be removed from the meeting.
I don't know who's talking, but I.
Anyway, we, my my point is that they're working with staff, they're working with with our community development department. But everybody must comply with the rules. I understand the frustration.
We've got too many comments here on a public item, so let's just move on.
Yeah, let's just, we're going to move on to our whoever has their, whoever has their hand up that says resident. Can you please identify yourself and you have three minutes to speak to something that is not on the agenda?
Go ahead. President, you are unmuted.
Good evening, City Council. I just was looking at Joel, I think, and Lisa. And I'm, my wife and I moved here about three years ago. We're planning on doing an addition.
Can you identify yourself, please? Your name and where you live?
Now, I see what what you guys did to them. And after hearing from this couple, where they had an.
Uh and after hearing from this couple, where they had an ADU project, was totally botched by your city? And why would I not think the same thing is gonna happen to us? I mean, this couple, their elderly mother is ill in bad health, and she just lost her husband. And your city gives them a si- uh signed building permit to start work? But three minutes, three months later, you tell them you're canceling their approved permit? Three, it's not a day later, it's three months later. And to the Millbrae Council, is this how you represent and treat your citizens? Is it okay to give permits to citizens and let them tear down decks, walls, yards? Build half of the ADU? And then spend over a hundred thousand dollars? Then tell them, because of our incompetent building department, which can't even correctly write out its own rules? We will just make you pay for the fiasco we've created. Uh I'm flabbergasted. So I guess what you could do is if they sue you, you'll take our tax money that we pay so much for, and you can use that, waste that, and sue them in court and fight it all out when the whole thing, it seems like is your problem. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Elaine, were you able to get his name and?
No, I do did not. President, could you state your name, please?
Could the last speaker speaker please say their name and their address, please?
Nope, we don't have to.
Okay, they're not going to. Michael Kelly, you're up next.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, esteemed City Council and City Manager. So nice to see you back and looking healthy. Um wanted to just make brief mention in these few minutes of public comment. I'm one of the co-founders of the Millbrae Anti-Racist Coalition Coalition. I'm so pleased to hear about the proclamation recognized on Juneteenth. Thank you for that. Um the other comments I'd like to make tonight are in the vein that I've shared before in the most recent meetings uh that I live and vote in Millbrae, and I appreciate being able to talk about the topic of the San Mateo County Sheriff's election, uh especially as Millbrae contracts with the Sheriff's Department for our policing needs. I'm calling today to share my concern and other ARC members and neighbors and voters that now that the voice and the will and the votes of the public have been heard, want to make sure that they they'll be protected and our safety ensured as it is virtually certain we'll have a new sheriff for the upcoming term. Since Millbrae Chief of Police Corpus, her substantial lead from the June seventh vote is only growing as more votes are counted. Currently, more than twelve thousand votes ahead with only about forty thousand left to count. Specifically, my concern is in protecting the integrity, its structure, and the budget of the sheriff's office once the vote is certified July, until our new sheriff formally takes the reins in January. It's incumbent on the five county Board of Supervisors to proactively take steps to safeguard that office and with it, the safety of our community. But with that, even though most of you, the Millbrae City Council members endorsed and raised funds for outgoing Sheriff Bolanos, for myself and on behalf of Millbrae ARC and our whole county, we're requesting that you reach out to the County Board of Supervisors and implore them to take action. Two items in particular would go a long way in ensuring that the safety and the will of the voters is recognized. The first being that a check and balance system get put in place during the transition to safeguard that the sheriff office expenditures in excess of, say, seventy-five thousand dollars require a third signature like the county manager. There's a widespread concern that the incumbent office holder will try to hobble the new sheriff before she can even get started by draining the funding she'll need to make the changes she was elected to effect. It's been a contentious campaign. Outgoing Sheriff Bolanos has a reputation for being vindictive. The second item to move us, to protect us and move forward would be a Board of Supervisors order that creates a sheriff's transition team that would include the sheriff-elect Corpus and her appointed representatives who participate in and ensure that it has appropriate enforcement mechanisms to prevent any degradation of the ability of our new sheriff to enact what we've elected her to do. Thank you all very much for your consideration. I remain optimistic that each of you will do right by your elected office, even though most of you backed our new sheriff's opponent. I have faith that you can put that aside and continue to act in the best interest of our county. Thank you and be well.
Thank you. We're gonna move on to consent calendar next. I don't see any other hands raised unless I'm missing something.
There, we see no more hands. Um again, on the consent calendar, we are requesting that item ten just be removed from the agenda, and we'll bring back this item back to the council.
Okay, so we have item number five, adoption of a resolution finding that the proclaimed state of emergency continues and impact the ability to meet safely and in person, and declaring that the City Council and City Commissions, the committees, will continue to meet remotely in order to ensure the health and safety of the public. Number six, approval of the library parking lot closure and fee waivers for the Japanese Cultural Festival on October second, two thousand and twenty-two. Number seven, waive the second reading and the adoption of the ordinance amending the zoning map pursuant to the Millbrae Municipal Code Title Ten Planning and Zoning Article ten uh eight ten eighteen amendments to change the zoning district for the property at nine nine eight Larkford Drive. Parcel number zero two one two one zero two eight zero from open space zoning district to the single-family residence R one zoning district. Number eight, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a community benefit agreement with the Millbrae Adrian Science Park LLC for the Millbrae Adrian Science Park located at two ten Adrian Road. And number nine, a resolution adopting a list of projects for the fiscal year twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three funded by Senate Bill One, the Road Repair and Accountability Act of two thousand and seventeen. Do we have a motion? Council?
Quick question.
Councilmember Snyder first, please.
Um I'm happy to make a motion to approve. I had asked you to pull agenda item eight, but I did get a response back for staff on that one, but I have a question about number nine, but it wouldn't affect my vote. So how would you like to do that, Mayor?
Go ahead and ask it, please.
The the SB nine is money for road repair, and a number of the roads are in parts of the city where residents over the decades have cemented in what's called the parking strip, which adds
SB one?
Under SB one.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm sorry, um under agenda item number nine. My question is, if and we get the funding for those projects in those areas, can we also work with the neighborhood to remove the concrete from the parking lanes and bring it back as either bio swales or get the trees planted that were removed to put the concrete in? And I know that's something that be handled elsewhere, but to me, this is my request that each action that we take on the city has a climate change, climate resiliency component. And uh SB one, hopefully, we can use those funds. If we're tearing up the street, we can tear up the concrete right next to it. Thank you.
Yeah, unfortunately, if I may, Mayor, unfortunately, the the eligibility for SB one is only for streets curb to curb um council members, so we won't be able to use this money for that.
No, not to use the money, City Manager, but to have a parallel process that we could get rid of some of this concrete and create a place for water to go into the soil and plant trees. So something if we could come up somehow in this process, because we're gonna have our trucks there anyway.
I got you. Okay.
Thank you.
We'll look into it.
Vice Mayor, do you have a second for us?
Uh no, I had a question on item eight, please. So I think I might need some discussion on that one.
Need discussion or do you have a question, a quick question? Want to pull it?
Yeah, I gotta pull it. Sorry.
All right. Councilmember Schneider, do we have a motion on everything other than eight, five, six, seven, and nine?
Absolutely.
Gina?
Yes.
Second. Okay, let's call for the vote, please.
Councilmember Snyder?
Yes.
Councilmember Oliver?
Aye.
Councilmember Fung?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pappin?
Yes.
Mayor Leva?
Yes.
Consent items five, six, seven, nine are approved by the vote of five to zero.
Okay, so now we have on the table a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a community benefit agreement with the Millbrae Adrian Science Park LLC for the Millbrae Adrian Science Park located at two ten Adrian Road. Vice Mayor, you had a question?
Yeah, and I apologize for not handling this beforehand. Um I just, you know, what kind of community benefit are we talking about here? I think community benefit really needs to go before the council. Um oh, you know, we we are dealing with an issue now with another big project and a monument, so I'm not I need a little clarification on what's happening here.
Um I would like to just uh quickly, I think Darcy Smith, our Community Development Director, can address those questions.
Yeah. Thank you, Darcy Smith, Community Development Director. I think it might help if I provided a quick PowerPoint. I know we have a busy agenda, but I'll just cover this and maybe through the quick presentation that answers your question. So this is a community benefit agreement for the Millbrae Adrian Science Park that's at two ten Adrian Road. And the requested action tonight is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute this community benefits agreement, which I'll explain on the future slides exactly what that agreement is and the other community benefits of the project, which are not in this agreement, but part of the project as conditioned. Project location is here, two ten Adrian Road, just south of the Millbrae Transit Station in our and adjacent to the other life science project under construction. The project is approximately two hundred and sixty three, two hundred and sixty-three thousand square feet of life science building. Includes lab and office space and associated open space, circulation and parking and infrastructure improvements, which I'll cover. Some of those are community benefits. Six stories high, here's um the backside of it with a beautiful green wall, and you can see the upper story terraces, which are also vegetated. So the Millbrae Stationery Specific Plan, or MSASP for short, has a community benefits program that has been used for other projects such as T O D one and two and Alexandria Life Sciences Campus that is triggered for proposed increases in floor area ratio or densities. And in this case, the floor area ratio for the project would be slightly above the baseline maximum. It would be two point nine two, which is just slightly over the two point five by thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and forty-four point five square feet. And the City Council last October amended the specific plan to allow these community benefits agreements. Um traditionally, the city then turned to development agreements for T O D one and two. Those are really large and substantial negotiated contracts between the city and the community benefits agreement is slightly simpler for a project like this where the city and the developer have negotiated a simpler arrangement, which would be, in this case, a cash payment. That I'll cover on the next slide. Um another amendment approved by the City Council in October twenty twenty-one did allow for the city to accept community benefit funds or cash funds paid into the city's Affordable Housing Fund, um which was established by the City Council with the Affordable Ha- Housing Litigation Package last July. So we had a new fund and a new opportunity to fund that, and many other cities on the peninsula um have accepted such cash contributions into the Affordable Housing Fund. So again, since this project, just this one building, exceeds the maximum allowable floor ratio, the city um talked to the applicant and staff recommends that we enter into this community benefits agreement that would specify the full satisfaction of the obligation of the project through the payment of five hundred thousand dollars into that Affordable Housing Fund. This was negotiated between the city and the developer, essentially reflects reflects the payment of the Affordable Housing Commercial Linkage Impact Fees, which are currently twelve dollars and eighty-six cents per gross square foot for the floor ratio that's in excess of that baseline maximum floor ratio. And this would allow the city to grow this fund to provide support for broad-range affordable housing. Again, other cities on the peninsula have taken this approach for community benefits where they don't have a large site such as um the city had on T O D one and two. Um but that said, this project is providing quite a bit of other quantifiable and unquantifiable community benefits. Um there's a significant amount of off-site utility upgrades costing approximately seven hundred thousand dollars. Um some of this may seem sort of typical, but these are brand-new um lines that are going in, and that would save the city the cost of that. Um there's a new bicycle lane on Harriet Tubman Way in Adrian Row. There's a brand-new two-way road um running parallel to the to the station, so sorry, to the railway tracks. Um and the construction cost of that is approximately six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. There's an in-lu fee for future recycled water line. And there's more, um again, not necessarily quantifiable, um but broad community benefits such as job creation, um eight hundred-plus tenant employees, four hundred-plus construction jobs, four hundred-plus indirect jobs. Um the the developers voluntarily made the commitment to union labor. Um there is an accessible entry plaza, so other projects have provided um open space similar to this, and I'll show it to you on the next slide. There's a publicly accessible ground-floor cafe. Um upper floor balconies with plantings are inside the lobby, typically visible from the public plaza, bike lockers and facilities, other sustainable design features um consistent with our REACH code and our Climate Action Plan and that living building wall. So again, that public plaza, which is similar to what um some other projects have provided just as a baseline requirement in the Millbrae Stationery Specific Plan um is shown here, um it would be planted with great sustainable plants and native species. Um here's a blow up of that. Um and to the extent, you know, there'll be a huge amount of employees heading up this way to the station. I think we have a really nice urban design feature. Um so that concludes my overview of the community benefits for the project. And again, the staff recommendation for the action tonight before you is to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute that community benefits agreement for this Millbrae Adrian Science Park. So happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Darcy. That was very helpful. Um I have a quick question. Uh you know, projects like this are really, really important, and I wish we had a little more time to discuss community benefits like this, and I hope that our city sometime in the near future deals with the airport and gets some sort of childcare funding um attached. We can't do it now. It's already gone. I get that, but I would like to see some lighting outside there. Is that included in there? Updoor amenities. Okay.
Yes, yes.
Thank you very much. And again, my apologies for not addressing something this significant earlier, but it is very significant, and I think the public enjoyed the presentation. Thank you.
Councilmember Schneider.
Thank you, Mayor. Um and it and I'm right in line with Vice Mayor Pappin. The reason I had talked about pulling this is I knew, because we had one-on-one meetings with Longfellow, that there were a host of other benefits to the city, but they weren't being shown. And I believe that part of our job is to help the public understand the great new things that are coming with this. One of the things that is missing from the list that Director Smith showed was another wall where they had talked, at least in my group, about a community visible mural on that. And my concern is that the MSASP has its set of rules and what's reported out as a community benefit. And then there's sort of this thing like the art, which we didn't have in place, but which the Gateway Project and Sarah Station both included art. So uh what we talked about earlier today was um a lot of the additional things, bird-friendly windows, which Longfellow agreed with, solar panels on the rooftop. All of this terrific stuff would be handled further into the process as the Adrian Science Campus goes forward, and hopefully that's correct. But but I agree, it would be great if we had more time, because truly, to the public, there are numerous benefits coming from these, and and I'm very happy to welcome Longfellow to the City of Millbrae.
Is that a motion?
Uh that can be a motion, but I see Councilman Oliver is also up.
Yes, but with somebody's gonna make a motion.
That's a motion. That's a motion, Mayor.
Councilmember Oliver, thank you. Councilmember Schneider.
Thank you. Um yeah, I think all good points that we made. One other, and I had a briefing with them as well, and it looks like a great uh project. Um one other amenity that they had discussed um in that meeting that is not present here, is not present in the presentation just now, is I believe there's like a large conference room, um I think on the third or fourth floor that they said would be made available for uh city meetings or various uh types of meetings, like maybe a good location perhaps for some of the regional boards such as C CAG or um commute.org due to the central location, the access um to transit. Um is that something that is included in writing somewhere within the conditions of approval? Um if not, can we add that into the community benefits agreement?
Darcy?
Yeah, it's not included in the condition of approval. I think we would need to get input from the developer as to whether we'd be amenable to that. Having worked on a lot of campuses over the years, security can be an issue, but if the room could be accessible, um they might be willing to agree to it, but if we want it in the agreement, I think we need to defer to the applicant's attorney. Um Frank Petrelli was on the call tonight to see if the developer would be amenable to that.
Well, we don't even know if C CAG wants to have meetings there yet.
I'm just saying.
I mean, let, maybe we should bring that up.
It was mentioned verbally in the briefing that it would be made available for uh you know, community meetings uh as a meeting space if if available. Obviously, the tenants there have first priority, but how do we follow up on that to make sure we can use it in some capacity?
I think that's a good question. How do we follow up on it? And maybe, Darcy, you could come with, we could get an answer to further date on that.
Yes, I'd be happy to follow up later.
Are you okay with that, Councilmember Holibur?
Sure.
Anything else? Nope. Nathan Chang. Go to the public now. Nathan?
Hello? Can you all hear me?
Yeah, we hear you.
Okay, great. I used to work at, Nathan Chan, I live at 151 El Camino Real. Definitely exciting to see Milbury develop biotechnology area. Having worked in biotech for a number of years, it's definitely a very exciting field. One thing I do want to make sure to, the city council and the planning department is cognizant of, of course, is that as Milbury brings in a lot more biotech jobs, we need to be mindful of the type of displacement pressure that this will have on not just our community, but our surrounding communities. And we don't want to follow the example set by some of our neighbors set south of us who are happy to approve tons and tons of office space, but have no plan for how the workers will be housed. And so then people have to commute from across the bay to get to work. I just did a sort of a quick back-of-the-envelope calculation based on the tenants' jobs number that Darcy put on the slide there. And a healthy sort of jobs-to-housing ratio, as I understand it, is about one and a half. And so if there's a plan to, in order to make sure that enough housing is provided for these anticipated new jobs, we need an additional 533 units of housing in Milbury. Will that be met by fulfilling our next housing element goals? Or would that be in addition to that housing element, to the housing element goals? And another thing I wanted to bring up too is that while $500,000 seems like a lot of money at the going rate in some places in California for producing low-income housing, that would produce probably just one or two units. And so.
I can't hear. Nathan, we're losing you unless it's just me, but I just saw Councilmember Schneider too. I think we lost him.
Yeah, no, he lost his microphone.
There, yeah.
Created by this project and proud of me.
Sorry, Nathan, we still can't hear you.
Okay, well, hopefully we'll ask Nathan to send us an email of some sort with that comment so we can hear the finishing touches of it. I hate to, would that be okay with everybody to move on? I'm trying to push it, but. All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a motion from Councilmember Schneider. Do we have a second to approve item number, is it eight? I'll second it.
Happen.
Okay. Can we call for a vote, please?
Councilmember Schneider?
I'm a yes with a request to staff. This county doesn't talk about it the way Santa Clara County talks about the jobs-housing balance. Milbury has been a housing supply for all of the other cities growing their office space. And it is time now for Milbury to get the economic benefit you get by having offices. So I think that would be best in future staff reports to talk about the job-housing balance and how Milbury, how it impacts our economy. But I am a very happy yes vote.
Councilmember Holibur?
Aye.
Councilmember Fung?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pappen?
Yes.
Mayor Leva?
Yes.
Consent item number eight, passed by a vote of five to zero.
Okay, next on our agenda is a public hearing item. And it's an action to approve the 990 Larkspur Drive Single Family Resident Project, adopt a resolution approving the design review permit with the floor area ratio setback and height exceptions and a lot-line adjustment of the parcels located at 1002 Crestview. Parcel number 021210260998 Larkspur Drive, parcel number 021210280, and 996 Larkspur parcel number 021210290 to allow the construction of a three-story single-family residence on a vacant lot located at 990 Larkspur Drive in the single-family residence zoning district. This is an action item. And before we discuss it, I'd like to open up to, open up the public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. I would also like to introduce Ms. Darcy Smith again, our Community Development Director for a staff presentation.
Hi, good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor Pappen, and City Councilmembers. Darcy Smith, City Milbury Community Development Director. Just to provide a brief introduction to the speakers tonight. We have Rosco Mata, the Planning Manager, who will be making the bulk of the presentation. But we have a special presenter, David Schreier, who's the Principal Geotechnical Engineer at Cotton Shires and Associates. They're a city hired firm. To peer review, they have a deep history of working in the city of Milbury, including on the landslide near the site, and they provide a full range of engineering, geologic and geotechnical engineering services. Mr. Schreier is very familiar with our city and has done work here and all over the peninsula, over the state. He's a registered geotechnical engineer and a registered professional civil engineer. We also, in case you have questions after the presentation, have Kevon Erinajad, who's the city's chief building official, who's also a registered structural engineer. So with that, I'll hand it over to Mr. Mata, who will make the presentation along with Mr. Schreier.
Thank you, Council. My name is Rosco Mata, the Planning Manager. I'll be making the presentation. Are you all seeing the presentation? Okay?
Yes.
Thank you. So this item tonight, as you all know, is 990 Larkspur Drive Single Family Residential Project for a new single-family home. But the action tonight is to adopt a resolution approving the design review permit with floor area ratio setback and height exceptions and a lot-line adjustment of the parcels located at 1002 Crestview Drive, 998 Larkspur Drive and 996 Larkspur Drive to allow the construction of a three-story single-family residence on a vacant lot located at 990 Larkspur Drive in the R1 zoning district. Just a little, real quickly, just background, the city council made action on the 24th, which approved the ordinance for the zoning map amendment, and that was approved 5-0. And then this item regarding the design review and entitlements for the home was continued to this city council meeting. Just a little bit of background to refresh everyone's memory. This is the home site, which is located just down the slope of 1002 Crestview Drive. The site is located on the up slope, and it's indicated by the red, sorry, yellow arrow. And just for context, the city's water pump station is located in the bottom right corner of the image to the right, to the left. Just to also briefly touch on the constraints of the site. The site slopes very steeply, 20 to 52%. It's irregularly shaped due to the varying lot depth and frontage. And the requirement of a two-car garage on the ground floor takes up a majority of the ground floor space, which necessitates the multiple levels of hell. Here is an aerial view showing the property lines of the subject parcels. And to the right is the map, the parcel map, showing the property lines overlaid with the topography to show the steepness of the site. The existing house located on Crestview Drive, which is the applicant's current home, is indicated in red. This is the property line configuration after the lot-line adjustments. And the blue area here is the lot in question where the new single-family home will be located. The project includes an application for a lot-line adjustment, a design review permit with height, floor area and setback exceptions. And the new proposed lot will be E4, low over 8,400 square feet. The new single-family home will be approximately 4,600 square feet. And that includes a garage, excluding the garage, will be about 3,800 square feet. And includes four bedrooms and, as I mentioned, two-car garage on the ground floor. Here again is the proposed site plan that shows the house footprint on the lot. And just for context, the existing home with proposed single-family, with a proposed lot-line adjustment, and then the new property lines in blue for the new lot. Here's the proposed front elevation, just to refresh everyone's memory. This is the approximate view of the elevation from the street. And then the two side elevations that show the steepness of the site. And now I will turn this presentation over to the city's peer review consultant, Cotton Shires, to briefly go over the geotechnical study. And then I will conclude the presentation. After staff's presentation, the applicant also will be making a presentation.
Thank you, Rosco. I'm David Schreier, Principal Geotechnical Engineer with the firm of Cotton Shires and Associates. As mentioned, Cotton Shires Associates are consultants to the city. And for this application, we completed a geologic and geotechnical peer review for the proposed lot split at 990 Larkspur. So the applicant's consultants was first EIC, and they later morphed into Atlas Technical Consultants. Their studies completed to date include an investigation, characterization and analysis of the soil, bedrock and groundwater conditions, review of the topographic conditions and review of previous geotechnical investigations in the area. Their subsurface investigation included drilling and sampling seven small diameter borings to a depth of up to 28 feet and excavating and downhole logging one, two-by-three hand-dug shaft to a depth of 23 feet. They also performed laboratory testing of the selected samples from the borings. And then they've completed slips-to-bill analysis. Well, that's what they said, but I'm going to try and paraphrase it for you all. "To demonstrate that a safe temporary shoring wall can be constructed to allow the development of a second lot." Next slide, please. So the city hired Cotton Shires Associates to peer review the various geotechnical reports on behalf of the city and to ensure safe construction of the potential of the proposed site improvements. The purpose of the peer review is to assess the validity and quality of the study in reference to the proposed lot split and potential excavations necessary to construct the proposed improvements. So a geotechnical investigation includes the investigation of the subsurface conditions, a characterization of the subsurface conditions, identification of potential geologic hazards, analysis of the soils, and then finally, development of a mitigation of those site hazards. So as geotechnical peer reviewers, we were charged with making sure that they've checked each of those boxes and also that they are practicing within the standard of practice for the area. So for this peer review, there were a total of five submitted reports between 2018 and 2021. And we reviewed the first four and provided comments. And the fifth one, we provided a recommendation to the city for acceptance. Next slide, please. So the geotechnical consultants for the applicant developed this geologic map on the upper left-hand corner, which shows their boring locations. The under, the base is a topographic map. It also shows cross-sections up and down the slope in the upper right-hand corner, which shows an outline of the proposed building, as well as the downhole shaft in the darker green color. And on the lower right, a cross-section along a cross-slope. Basically, in their investigation, they encountered a thick fill deposit overlying a thin layer of soil, which was on top of the bedrock. And their investigation, as I mentioned, they characterize the subsurface materials. They developed shear strengths of those materials. They analyzed those materials and determined that the excavation, as indicated, couldn't be constructed unless it was properly shored. And they developed recommendations for that shoring, which I'm going to show you in the following slides. Next slide, please. So as I indicated, after the fifth peer review, we provided the city with our recommendation for geotechnical approval of the lot split and rezoning. And we included recommended conditions of approval for that lot split, which included geotechnical plan review of the shoring wall, as well as construction inspection during the project construction. We're going to get into this a little in further slides, but future city building department submittals will include the submittal of a geotechnical design level report that would include foundation recommendations and design criteria for the walls, for the foundation for the house, grading recommendations, drainage recommendations. The submittal would also require civil and structural plans and inspections. Next slide, please. So for the shoring wall, the applicant's consultant came up with this concept. It's a top-down construction called a soil nail and shotcrete wall. The blue lines that are inclined into the slope are soil nails. They're approximately 45 feet long. This cross-section shows bedrock, which is in the orange color. The soil layer over the bedrock, which is called colluvium, in the red layer. And then the yellow layer is the fill. So those soil nails are designed to support the cut and the circular lines indicate hypothetical failure surfaces that the program analyzed. Next slide, please. This slide shows an example of this type of construction. The machine in the background is drilling a soil nail at the inclined inclination. We're looking down the face of the shotcrete wall. Next slide, please. This is a face view of that wall, and you can see the first row of soil nails has been drilled and shotcrete, and the plates are installed. If you look further down, you can see the drain panels. And between the drain panels, you can see the next row of soil nails that's been drilled. And next slide, please. And here's a more detailed view of the next row of soil nails with the steel reinforcing being installed. Next slide, please. And finally, you can see the shotcrete that covers the two rows of soil nails. For the wall that's being proposed at 990 Larkspur, this wall would be significantly higher. Those soil nails, incidentally, are typically on about five-foot vertical on center. Next slide, please. So soil nail and shotcrete wall is a common construction method used for temporary shoring in the Bay Area. It's typically used in hillside developments. You can see this type of construction on Highway 92 on your way to Halfm Bay and on 580 going over the Altamont Pass. Typically, the shoring, a shoring soil nail contractor will develop the specifications and designs, which will be submitted to the geotechnical engineer. which will be submitted to the uh geotechnical engineer record for uh review. And the geotechnical engineer record will inspect the construction for conformance with their recommendations. Uh next slide, please. Um so uh what's remaining, so uh as I indicated, uh once the shoring wall is designed, yeah, they'll need a grading permit as well as a building permit. Uh they'll need to submit structural design and plans for the actual uh building of the um retaining walls for the house as well as the house construction. They'll also need to submit grading and drainage plans. Again, they'll need to submit a design level geotechnical report. Um the all those submitted documents will need to um conform with the California Building Code. And all those documents will also need to be peer reviewed by uh the the city of Millbrae and their consultants. And the building official will also need to review it and uh issue building permits. The city will then have a structural inspector who will inspect the construction. And the geotechnical engineer record will also inspect the construction. Next slide, please.
Thank you, David. Uh so this is uh these are the uh renderings of the posed home um after the the construction of the uh shock creek and stabilization. The construction of the home uh will will look like this, more or less. And then uh materials board, this was previously shown in the presentation um prior to this, regarding this project. Uh but here it is again, shows the materials of of the garage, gutters, um the roofing material, um the type of chaining wall and stone facades. Uh regards to the environmental review, the project um was determined to be categorically exempt per cent to uh section fifteen, three oh three, class A of California Environmental Quality Act, which allows single, single-family construction in residential zone. And uh just to review the planning commission recommendation to the city council, this was um uh recommendations to adopt the resolution to approve the designer view permit with floor ratio setback and height exceptions and a lot line adjustment of parcels one thousand two Crestview Drive. APN zero two one dash two ten dash two sixty nine ninety-eight Larkspur Drive, APN zero two one dash two ten dash two eighty and ninety-six Larkspur Drive, APN zero two one two ten two ninety to allow the construction of a three-story, single-family residence on a vacant lot to be located at nine ninety Larkspur Drive uh in the single-family residential zoning district. Uh this is subject to the attached conditions of approval and contingent upon the ordinance being approved um and becoming effective. Staff is available to answer any questions, as mentioned previously. The the chief building official, uh Kevon Ranjad is available, David Char from Cotton Shires and um senior geologist Craig Stories also available to answer any questions regarding the geotechnical aspects of peer review. Um that the present, the applicant is also present, will be making a short presentation after this. Um should uh council not have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Um so I think we should go to council questions first, and then we'll hear from the public if that's good, okay with council? Council? No, no questions?
Can we hear from the applicant, Madam Mayor?
Sure.
Mayor, it looks like one of the council, it looks like Councilmember Snyder does have her hand up.
Okay, um Councilmember Snyder, thank you. Tom, I didn't see it.
Uh thank you, Mayor, and uh staff, thank you. Just a a little bit of background here. Um I very much want to thank staff for a one-on-one meeting. I think it was offered to every council member. We I had my one-on-one meeting with them last Thursday. I went over the concerns that the neighborhood had brought to me, and I very much can see what I thought were some of the neighborhood concerns reflected in the work that Mr. Schreier just explained to us, which greatly helped me understand the geotechnical aspect of it, and is this actually a safe project to build? So I just, I I want to hear from the public before more, but I do want to say thank you so much for the staff time and uh the consultant time. I would point out that the two consultants, both Craig, who told me he climbed down that thirty-three foot a hole in the ground, which would scare the daylights out of me, um but he climbed down that to check the soil and Mr. Schreier. Uh both their peer work is paid for by the applicant and not paid for by the city. That's a question or a concern that came up at the previous meeting. Uh also that um Mr. Schreier, I believe, and please correct me, that you were involved with fixing the hillside after it fell down. So it was great to hear that we've got someone with long history with the city of Millbrae. So uh uh it may not answer, I hope the presentation answered some of the concerns of the neighborhood. That was my intent, is trying to bring the neighborhood and the applicant closer together so that we can have a win-win tonight. That is dearly my hope tonight, that we can be a neighborhood again on that. Thank you.
Did you have a question, Councilmember Snyder?
No, I just wanted to point out that, well, I I will say that um I did actually um write up uh summary of my meeting with staff. I sent it out to the Larkspur residents saying that I am much more satisfied now with the engineering and the geotechnical than I was. Um and uh uh you know, I wanted to listen to what's going to happen tonight, but I very much appreciate that time, and I hope for other projects like this in really tricky land use areas that we take that time perhaps prior to planning, that the question would be then, Mayor, that we have a study session where residents, next-door neighbors can meet with the applicant, and they can work through these issues before they get to planning and before uh before they get to council, if it comes to council, and especially when it's complicated geotechnical information. Thank you.
Roscoe, did you want to tackle that question?
It doesn't really have to be answered. It's exactly what I asked the city manager after watching the planning commission. So I think it's a continuous improvement issue. Roscoe, you don't need to, it it's just, I think it's better for all of us if we can get to the more technical stage stuff really early in. And that the meeting last week greatly helped me understand what's going on on that hillside.
Okay, so uh Councilmember Fung, you wanted to hear from the applicants. Billy and Jessica, you're here, correct?
Uh yeah, either either Mr. and Mrs. Panel or Architect uh on the file. Do they have anything to say?
Uh the architect is also um available too. Do you want to start with him and then come to us?
Eh as you wish.
Whatever you're comfortable with.
Chris, are you, are you available to um to speak?
I am, if you can hear me.
We hear you perfect.
Okay. So I I'll start right now. Uh well, I mean, I didn't think anybody wanted to hear me again describe the project. Done it many, many times now. Um but I think it's a very well-designed house, as you know. I I have always about my projects, but um but uh I just want to say, uh one of the things uh that was so concerning about uh some of the neighbors was um was the size of it, and as we discussed in the last council meeting, uh the uh square footage, uh the way the city of Millbrae calculates uh uh floor area ratio and size is by uh uh the square footage, including garage and so forth and so on. I did a laser scan um of four houses across the street. Uh actually, two days ago, and I just did the calculations. Uh this was partly with a drone, partly I can do from the ground um without uh trespassing on private property. Uh and uh on volume, just say the new house, this is volume above ground. Does anybody want to hear the comparisons of like three or four houses in the neighborhood or no?
Yes.
Okay, um so volume, in my opinion, and that's the bulk of what anybody would see who walked by or drove by. Uh and uh that's what's above the ground. Uh this house has, uh the proposed house has um uh sorry, I have a bunch here. Nine ninety has uh twenty-six thousand nine hundred cubic feet of volume. Uh the smallest house across the street of the five immediately across the street does only have nineteen thousand eight hundred. They are awfully big, and I don't know if Mr. Mata would uh care to show that aerial slide he has. I thought it was a very good idea, but uh they are very large footprint houses, and they are largely two stories. And uh that one is mostly a one-story at nine ninety-nine. Nine ninety-seven is forty-two thousand six hundred cubic feet. Remember, the proposed house is twenty-six thousand nine hundred. These are above ground, not including any basements or below. Uh nine seventy-nine is thirty-nine thousand one hundred, again thirteen thousand cubic feet more than uh than our app uh application. Uh nine eighty-five is thirty-eight thousand four hundred and uh nine ninety-two. Uh sorry, that that's not night, there is no ninety-two as as far as I know. Um so uh so that's that four across the street, sorry. So one was thirty-eight four hundred, one was thirty-nine one hundred, one was forty-two six hundred, sixty percent larger, and nine ninety-nine was smaller, uh nineteen thousand eight hundred. And again, compared to the twenty-six thousand eight hundred cubic feet uh of the uh the proposed house. And those are again all in cubic feet. Does that, does it make sense? I want to make sure I was somewhat clear on that.
It's clear to me.
Okay, so uh it's not a large house that anybody will see. It is when you count the underground part. Um and um uh I think it's going to be a very nice um a nice addition to the neighborhood, and I think complemented very well. Uh I will be happy to answer any questions about architectural details and so forth, if anybody not sick of hearing about them. Uh and um uh I'm here, here for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fung, did you want to hear from anybody else?
Uh uh if the applicant, uh Mr. and Mrs. Panel, I gotta knock, Mrs. Panel, if you guys would like to say a few words.
Yes, yes. Good evening, uh Mayor and fellow fellow council members. Um I'm Billy Ponatopoulos, and I'm joined here with my wife Jessica. Um as you just heard from my uh architect, and I'd like to echo what he said. Um eh this, this, this house took a lot of finesse. Uh you know, to 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 build it on a site that was extremely challenging. Um you know, we worked tirelessly with uh with the planning departments and the city engineers uh as well as all the geotecs parties involved um to to construct the house that was in character with the neighborhood and uh and ultimately safe to build. Um I plan on moving my family into this house. Uh I've got three children, they all go to Meadows. And this Millbrae is what we call home. We don't want to move to another town. Um I've been here forty-two years, uh basically born and uh and raised here and uh and settled here with my wife and my kids. Um my wife, you know, she's, she's very involved in the community, with the school, with M E F. Uh all that, we do our part to contribute to this community, and um you know, this, this process that that we went through, nine years plus now, uh to try to get this project approved was uh obviously not easy, um but I feel like we finally um fulfilled all the requirements. Um and um we got to the point where we made it to the public hearing. Planning commissioners voted in favor for it, and um ultimately, I thought that, you know, we finally saw the light at the end of the tunnel, and we were able to build our home uh and and move forward. Um I understand the neighbors have concerns about the hill. Um by right, everyone should be concerned about stability of a hill. Um especially in this area. Uh I understand that, but that's why we hired the best of the best to do the analysis. And uh Millbrae hired the best of the best to basically uh to confirm the findings in the report. And uh and you know, everything checked out great, as you just heard from uh Mr. Shires. Thank you, Mr. Shires, for your presentation. I learned a lot myself tonight about uh about this hill and uh and the construction process uh to safely build uh on this property. So with all that being said, um I I have no hard feelings against my neighbors. Um you know, we've enjoyed living here at this address for the last eleven years. And uh we're very happy here, and um the last thing we want to do is have a bad relationship with our neighbors. Um we are here for the long haul, and uh this is what we want to call home forever. So um hopefully, you guys can uh you know, understand that and uh help us achieve our our dream of building our home. Thank you.
Thank you. It looks like we may have a question outside council. Is council completed their questions? Uh Councilmember Fung? You're on mute.
Just a couple of things um for our staff. I was appreciative of the session explaining uh all the geotechnical aspects of it. Although that's rather unusual for us to go into that level of detail, I certainly appreciate the analysis going in. This body and the one that's confirmed, the geotechnical, and I understand how so this must be for our applicant, which I appreciate. Um if Dossie or my, you know, Roscoe can help answer, I think on the survey sheet C two, um it explains that there's lots currently being proposed to be built on as a public utility commission, I mean public utility uh easement, excuse me. Um can you speak to that? And that there was some vacating of that public utilities for the benefit of the public, please?
Sure, yeah. Um so the, before any construction begins uh on the site, the um uh the applicant will be required to formally um go through a process to vacate any required, any easements on the site. Um that may be in that may be um in conflict with the construction, so that'll be required as part of the process.
So is it part of the condition of approval that the the entire vacant lot to be vacated from public utility easement?
I do, at least so I can double check.
I I can, I can, can I elaborate on that?
Yes, Mr. Panel.
Um so before we even, before I even began the process, um uh of the land development plan, um I had I had actually spoken to Key Lim um in Public Works at that time. And he advised me to reach out to the public utilities and request uh abandonment of the easement. Um so I I worked with the, with Comcast, AT&T, and um Comcast, AT&T, and who's the, who's the last one? Oh, P G and E. Um I worked with them for about a year. They came out, they visited the property. Um and they actually all signed off on it. So I've got letters from all three utilities uh agreeing to abandon the easement. Uh the only thing that they had requested was that we allow them five feet of space on either side of the power lines. Um and and the house was designed accordingly. Uh so we do have the letters from the utilities company um agreeing to abandon the easement. Uh the only thing that they ask is that when construction begins, uh they want a copy of the plans so they can relocate uh one guy wire uh that basically extends from the power pole from my house down the hill.
I see that you have an overhead power line going across the proposed lot.
Uh there's no power line going across the proposed lot. That's the existing power line uh that goes from my current house to one thousand Crestview Drive.
Okay, um I I guess I'm not going to drill on this, but uh just questions for staff, as part of the approval tonight, I keep seeking. Uh with the vacation of the public utility easement be part of the condition? Or are we assuming that it's going to be? Or are we assuming that it's gonna get done before we approve it? I'm just trying to get clarification on that.
Sure, it, it's, it'll be required. Um, we wouldn't be able to allow construction of the home uh, over an easement. Um, just a matter of procedural and standard practice. However, uh, we can uh, specifically include a condition um, uh, that, that would address that.
Okay, thank you. Um, just one more thing. Um, it is, I think we have already discussed it last time, that this project is seeking three exception. Um, can someone just give a brief descriptions as to cases that you're making in order to justify those three exceptions, please, either Mr. Matt May or the staff?
Roscoe?
Yes?
Yeah. Come on, and staff, this was gone over in the planning commission, so you should be able to list off very quickly why the three exceptions.
It was also in our report, Vice Mayor, so hopefully everybody read.
Sure, so, so the, the first one exception is for the floor ratio. Um, the, the site is steeply sloping. And the way the calculation of the floor ratio is, is that you would deduct areas of the site greater than thirty percent. So that would eliminate uh, a vast majority of the site. So if you were to adhere to that strict letter of the law, you, you could only build an eight-hundred-and-sixty-square-foot house. Um, because it's, it's, it's so, there's, there's virtually no flat areas. You're, you're essentially eliminating, I'm not, don't have the exact percentage, but uh, approximately more than seventy-five, more than eighty percent of the site area. So in order to build um, this house, you would need, or any house over eight-hundred-and-sixty square feet, you would need to um, request an exception to the floor ratio. Um, the second one is the height. Um, so uh, this site is a up-sloping site from the street, which means that um, there, there is very limited backyard space, so there isn't an opportunity to locate the structure um, towards the back, or if it was a downsloping site, down the hillside. Um, so that limits the depth of the structure. So um, with that narrowness of the stru, of the, the regular shape of the site and the um, the shallow depth, uh, inability to construct, you'd have to go higher. Uh, you can't go out deeper in, in, out and, and to the right. So there's, the, the, the geometry of the site limits potential locations where the home can be um, located or sighted. Um, and then the, the additional exception is setbacks, which um, the front yard setback requirement for upper stories is um, uh, requires the second story to be set back from the lower floor. And with, by doing that, um, you would shift the upper stories back. And again, if you look at the sections of the, of the house, the um, there's very rare limited room because of the upsloping nature of the site. So um, that, that, that's kind of the uh, rundown of the, the exceptions. I'm happy to clarify.
Thank you, Mr. Model. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Um, thank you, Madam Mayor. And so, to be clear here, the hill is stable. We get a simple?
Yes.
Expert, too. Okay. Thank you. It can be built on. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, it's just, we can see it go round and around here. Um, this is, seems to be a very difficult site. And there is, you know, they're trying to make all the accommodations. It went through planning in detail. Um, it's not going to interfere with any views. It is a new building on the side of a very steep hill. So yes, it's going to be there, but as far as people above, it's not gonna interfere with anybody's view. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Correct.
Right. And as far as the um, exceptions here, again, planning went through this in great detail. In order to build there, you are required, I mean, it necessitates these exceptions. Nobody, our, our planning regulations don't necessarily deal with buildings on the side of a very steep hill. So you require the exceptions in order to make this happen. We have housing requirements. This is one more house. I think we can take off Rena. Um, I hope that we can really take the recommendations of planning. And I think planning did also suggest they plant some more trees there so that it's more enclosed. And I believe the applicant agreed to that when I was listening. So it's not going to be something that just slapped on the side of a hill here. And people ask, this council asked about the water runoff. I think that's been addressed. I'm hoping the council here can, you know, we let this applicant who's been going through this for nine years. Um, I just, I haven't heard a question that hasn't been answered. So if there is one, I hope the council can resolve that at this point. I see Councilmember Holiver, so I will.
I, I think the, the reason why we continue this was for the expertise of the soil. And I think that's been addressed tonight. So if there's anything additional that we haven't discussed from last meeting or this meeting once again, can we please uh, hear from public? Looks like uh, Councilmember Holiver may have something.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Motta, um, in response to the last question from Councilmember Fung about the uh, exceptions and visibility setbacks, I think you had mentioned that if, to comply with the setback requirements, the house have to go further back into the hillside, is that what you said?
That, that's right. So there's um, second story addition, a second story. So development standards and zoning um, require that the upper story of the structures be set back, so the front and the sides, basically, so that it's, it's smaller than the, than the base of the house. And so um, you know, if you're to do that and to comply with it, you'd have to either, um, because of the shallowness of the site, move it back, you'd be cutting off significant portion of the second story, upper story.
So wouldn't the other way to comply with that would just be to make the second and third story a little bit smaller? Does it have to be a forty-six-hundred square-foot house? It can be potentially a little bit smaller, comply with those setbacks?
I, I don't think it's forty-six. I mean, the neighbors comparatively, I believe the, they said twenty-six-nine?
I see you're forty-six, four thousand, six hundred and two square feet. I believe that may include the garage.
Includes the garage, correct.
So, and I believe that um, some of the other neighboring homes are around twenty-five hundred to three thousand square feet. So yeah, potentially could this be redesigned to be a little bit smaller to be able to comply with the side and the front setback requirements on the other reports?
Potentially, I, I, I suppose, I suppose so. We, we didn't evaluate, um, you know, what type of home could be, um, you know, complying with those standards. I mean, I think that there would be significant um, uh, challenges because of the, of the um, the upper stories. As you, as you go up, then you have to go further back. So it's, it's, it's almost like wedding cake style. Um, could it possibly, it's potentially, um, the architect, the applicant's architect may be able to speak to, to how the, the home design will be affected in, in the layout configuration.
Is the architect able to?
I am. Um, again, my name's Chris McMahon. I'm the architect. Uh, yeah, I, you know what? Your questions are uh, uh, repeats of previous council members, and we've addressed every one. And sadly, I mean, I, I, I don't mean to be any, make any offense, but sadly, um, uh, every council has had, or planning commissioner has had different concerns and uh, preferences, and has had us change the design again uh, to uh, mold to their particular um, preference. And this is uh, the tenth, twelfth iteration of that to accommodate the city of Millbrae's continually changing uh, uh, wishes. And um, I, I thought tonight was gonna be about the, again, was gonna be about the hillside stability, not about the basic design of the house. So that's a little bit disappointing to me, but um, because I thought we'd had, you know, months and years to answer these, these um, aesthetic questions. Um, and uh, again, I thought I addressed the size of the house, i.e. in the volume, um, uh, fairly well. But again, I understand that Millbrae doesn't worry about.
Councilmember Holiver.
No further questions at this time. Thank you.
Yeah, I think the answer to the question is yes, they can redesign the house to fit the needs, but they've, they've asked for exceptions here. And council, we asked them to come back on the stability of the hill. That was the concern of the majority of the council last, last meeting.
Mayor, um, may I provide a little bit more context to, to the Councilmember Holiver's question?
Yes.
Roscoe, why don't, why don't we do that? If there are no further questions of the council, let's, let's.
We, we, we still have some.
But if, if there are questions, then we can answer those. But I think we should stay, you know, with the architect and everything, the technical aspects.
Can we go to the public? Now, I think our council is all, all spoken. Councilmember Schneider, can I hear the public Oliver Naomis, and then we'll come back for?
Sure.
Thanks. Oliver?
Yes, can you hear me?
We hear you.
Great. Uh, I'm really disappointed to see this happening tonight again, because we have to bring an expert. But you know, all of that has to do with the stability of the hill within this construction. Nobody is looking like the dry eye from a modern architect who forgot last time to everything else. Nobody's looking out for the rest of the neighborhood. So let me remind you, first petition, thirty-five digitally legal invalid signature have been collected. Second petition, seventeen of the direct living neighbors, property owners, taxpayer, right there from Crestview and Millbrae. So we're going from there to the little play again from architect and city council member that ten, eight years on this. How many times, how many hours have you spent on helping us trying to find a resolution? Because we're not against new development. We even would like to be supporting billionaire's family if only we were concerted and our concerns were listened to. This, yes, I can say to the geological expert, we can build, we can build anything anywhere, and so is for the architect. But at the end of the day, that doesn't mean it's right. This three-story, thirty-two feet, with all those exceptions, does not fit anything nearby. It's not because we are playing game with the ratio and combat, converting eight-hundred square feet to forty-two-hundred, forty-six-hundred. How can you go from eight-hundred because you just add a little leg and convert the open space to R1 to now building on the same side this giant obnoxious platform? And yes, again, we can build oil platform in middle of the ocean, and it's soundly safe. But here, we are looking at the entire neighborhood. None of us have the structure to retain the land, will move, it's flexible. So I'm asking to pull agenda number seven from the agenda. And I'm asking that the council member take into consideration all the concern and complaint from the neighborhood altogether. No matter how many hours have been spent from the city on this project, we are here because it's a public hearing. And with all the people that are opposed to this project, not only by the way it's been done, to the way and what it represents, this cannot get ignored. So again, the environmental concern is very much there. The documentation has been provided. This is agile soil, it flexes, and all of the rotting wall, great for the new owner of that house or whatever. But for the rest of us, we don't want to see seventeen-foot-tall wall and, and tombeing us, and we don't want to be in jail. So yes, it does have an effect on our privacy, our view, our land, and not talking about all the other disturbance and grievance that it approach. So if we want to live in more harmony, then we can get to a solution, because we are pro, pro, pro development, but whether it's a responsible development, not at the expense of the entire Laxbury and Crestview neighborhood. For some advantages, few will get, because again, we are locked down. Even the neighbors that was trying to build a simple swimming pool cannot, it's been denied, and now this guy can do this.
Thank you, Oliver. Okay, Councilmember Schneider, let's go back to the council for final comments.
And again, that, that brings me back to, if we can modify our process in the future, I think we can help reduce some of the, of, of the confusion. Um, I did want to go back to Vice Mayor Pappan's comment about water. And I was very properly educated by Mr. Schreier. I was the one that asked for a bioswale, and I thank uh, Mr. Schreier for saying what we need to do on this particular hillside is keep water away, or to keep the ground from becoming saturated or super saturated. So my request for a bioswale, I rescind that. I appreciate that the architect said, sure, they, they'd be willing to look at that. One of the things we did talk about, though, in terms of water and stormwater running down the hill, is the possibility of building a cistern, which could then give you water to use on site slowly, slowly moving the water back in. And all of that has to do with slope stability and stormwater maintenance. We have another agenda item tonight, talking about the flooding down at Tioga and Helen Drive and Geraldine, and water from Larkspur ends up down there. Um, in terms, the, the neighbors did talk to me about an eighteen-foot wall. I did bring that up with staff. Staff, I think the engineer said at some points it could even be taller than that. However, it is my understanding that that wall will not be visible, that it actually becomes the back corner of the house. And that ha, that sadly, has been hard to let the neighborhood know. And I think one of the things that they asked, which would be lovely as your permit process goes forward, to, if you're driving up Larkspur, so you're going up the hill, and you look at the portion of the wall that's gonna be seen from the driveway, I don't think that's more than maybe five feet. I, it's hard to tell from the drawings, but really that the neighbors will not be seeing that wall. If you can help the neighbors understand that, I think we can come to better agreement here. I do honestly to the neighbors, um, I am not an, a, a, a soil engineer, I'm not a geologist. I'm an environmental policy, environmental science with a couple of degrees in that. So policy coming from land use decisions. And I do honestly feel comfortable with the engineering. Once the peer review process was described to me, once the various levels of study, which is why this has gone on for so many years, what each study did was push the poor applicant, or push the applicant to do yet more work, leading to those forty-five or twenty-five-foot nails. And, and again, I do feel confident. And if you look at the hillside, it is slightly different than the section of the hill that came down. I, I didn't see, I thought I saw something in the plans that said you guys are, the applicant is building a pool. Is that, I'm looking at your faces right now.
Why not?
Yes.
No.
Great. No wait on the hillside. Love that. I loved when the vice mayor said maybe there can be some more plantings on there. But um, and, and I'm sorry, I, I talked to a couple of the neighbors at the community rec center opening, saying that I feel confident that the geology, the geotechnical work, that the work of the consultants hired by the city to review the work is good science. And, and if we can just clarify this wall, and to me, it's a very clever way of adding square footage without making it look like it, um, by tucking it into the hillside. So, and I don't really have an issue with the design. That was never my issue. My issue is, is that there's one request I would love to ask of our building inspector, which is a question I asked, uh, mainly because Millbrae has a history that people may take out a permit and not build what they permit. But the building inspector explained to me the processes that will be used for your project in this very complicated geological site, and maybe that will help the app, the, the neighbors know what's gonna go through as your house is built. And building inspector, he explained it in about three sentences, but it really helped me last week understand what was going on. Uh, Mayor, could we bring him on?
Sure.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Councilmember, Kevan Ranijad, Chief Building Official. Uh, from uh, looking at the plan, uh, building like this has been built all over the Bay Area as long as it's designed in conformance with the geotech report uh, and compliance with the building code for structural. And it is our job and duty to make sure every building being built in the city is comprised with all the building code requirement and seismic requirements and inspected in compliance with the code. And any changes or modification to the approved setup plan has to come back to the city for review and approval, and no inspection will be conducted. And frankly, if we see there is a changes in the plan without city approval or without us uh, reviewing the plan, we will issue a stop work notice. Now inspections, we do provide different level of inspection by geotech of the record. They're gonna monitor all the air nails and. Uh also, we're gonna have a special inspector to monitor all the shot grid. We are gonna have our city inspector to make sure everything is built according to their proof plan. As well as I have that authority under California building code, which I will ask the structural engineer of record to provide a structural observation. And we will have civil engineer to address and design all requirement in regard to the water runoff and drainage and so.
Thank you. And the other thing that we talked about in my one-on-one meeting, which again, I wish could have been with the entire neighborhood. But we are where we are is how um how. Our community development staff are available to explain and go over the permits and the drawings with the neighborhood. As the various processes go forward, I encourage the applicant to work with your neighbors so that again. The goal is we can be one community but feel safe and confident. That I now have that level of confidence, but I had that that extra meeting with them, which was invaluable. So I I thank you with that. And Darcy, I may not have explained it. I tried to see if Darcy would. Come up to the neighborhood and meet with them, but we're still in covid. But our community development staff are also there to explain everything to the neighborhood about what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, councilmember Schneider. Good to hear. Uh I really think. You know, it's not the shouldn't be the position of this council to redesign something the planning commission already went through. And I think the applicant has clearly stated that they're trying to move their family into a home that will accommodate. Um the growing family. And I think that's fair. It's I'm not sure that it's fair for us to shrink down something. Um almost to the point of inverse condemnation. Uh in limiting what they can do on a property when I think our planning. Department has clearly said it has to meet all the codes. It has to do all and they've done that. So at this point in time, I'd like to move approval of the application. Unless there's other comments. Thank you.
Oh, I'll second that motion, Vice Mayor. There any other comments? Councilmember Oliver.
Yes, thank you. And thank you to the geotech uh geotechnical peer review, Mr. Schires. Um for joining us this evening. I do feel a lot more comfortable about the uh. Geotechnical aspect of this project. Where I was a few weeks ago. That being said, I do feel like. Um I'm not comfortable with the massing of the building, uh the size and the uh. Noncompliance with the setback requirements. I think if it were to be a little bit smaller and could fit uh setback requirements. I could be in support of this, but at this time I I'm not. And you know, I wish perhaps we can set up a meeting with. The neighbors to meet with the applicant. It seems like they're pretty far apart in terms of. Uh the views are um and it does seem that this time there's a majority on the council before, so I think that would be six of them. Those are my thoughts at this time. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Uh excuse me, councilmember Fung, you have another comment.
Yes, please, Madam Mayor. Thank you. Um so. I just given the fact that the property owner owns the vacant lot that is own, you know, our one residential, I think the owner has the property right. Uh I think it's only fair that our city gives the applicant a clear path to success here. Um in their quest to entitlement, uh to build a single family home that is in compliance with our planning code. So I'll start with that. Um I also wanted to say that we need to respect our planning code as the code is created throughout democratic process. And that we all have a duty to uh uphold that planning code as much as possible. Um the variants and exceptions in my mind uh should only be granted when there is a proven hardship or circumstances which would lead. To a given project in feasible or, you know, impossible, uh unless exceptions were granted. Um and we should not grant exceptions purely based on design preferences. Um so in this case, I see significant findings that I could make. Uh to justify an F A R and setback exception. And that's for that project. Uh to understand that without these exceptions, the project would not be possible or feasible. Um but however, based on my understanding of the history of this design, I do believe. That there is a possibility to bring the project more into compliance with a height limit of thirty feet uh by way of. Modifying the roof line in some way. Um so but I understand, you know, it it takes uh the whole county to move. So uh but those are my comment right now at this point, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I'd like to close the public.
Um hearing.
Hearing, sorry. Is everybody okay with that? Can, right? All right. So we have a motion and we have a second. Vice Mayor, is your hand up again? Or is it old? There we go. So we have a motion and a second. Um Elaine, can we call for the vote?
Of course.
Councilmember Schneider.
I'm gonna be, yes, I really do like what Councilman Oliver said. But it's gone through planning and I see it as their role in that. So maybe again, process wise, city of Milbrae. Let's look at that process before it gets to council. I don't feel it's my role to tell how a house should look. But so I'm a yes.
Councilmember Oliver.
Nay.
Councilmember Fung.
I would abstain.
Vice Mayor Pappan.
Yes.
Mayor Aliva.
Yes.
Public hearing item number eleven passed by a vote of three to one dash one with councilmember. With councilmember Oliver dissenting and councilmember Fung abstaining.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, through the mayor, really quick comment to the neighborhood. I know you might feel like I'm not there for you. I am still here for you. Please continue to address your concerns to me. I'll do what I can.
Okay, so next on our agenda, we have um. Item, oh, sorry, we have to open up the public hearing for um item number twelve. But we're also going to listen here, um item, uh let me look it up, what you said.
Yeah, mayor, what what we wanted to do is adjust the calendar if the council agrees to uh move item thirteen uh to be heard now. Uh followed by item sixteen. Uh the two items are similar and they're they're pretty quick items, actually.
So is thirteen under, is it going to be under a public hearing?
Um it is, correct.
So we'll open up the public hearing for item number thirteen.
Okay, and I would like to uh introduce Andrea Papajon uh for a quick staff report. We also have uh our our. Water engineering team here as well. If there are any questions, technical questions as we go through the.
Thank you.
Staff report. So Andrea.
Great. Uh can you see my screen?
I'd like to ask a.
Oliver, I will call on you when it's the time. Thank you.
Can you see my screen? Okay?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Aliva, Vice Mayor Pappan and councilmembers Andrea Papajon, Environmental Programs. The purpose of this item is to hold a public hearing and consider possible action to declare a water shortage emergency. And adopt a resolution enacting stage two of the city's water shortage contingency plan. On uh last November, the SFPUC declared a water shortage emergency and adopted a ten percent. Systemwide use reduction with thirteen point seven percent reduction for wholesale customers. The implementation of the water shortage contingency plan contemplates declaring a water shortage emergency. Under Water Code, section three fifty. The emergency regulation requires the city to enact its water shortage contingency plan at level two. So as you know, the state continues to face severe drought conditions in response. Sorry, let me put um. And in response, Governor Newsom issued an executive order in March directing the state water board to consider adopting emergency regulations. To increase water conservation. On May twenty fourth, the state board adopted regulations consistent with his directive. The regulations require urban water suppliers such as the city to take some specific drought response actions. One of the actions is requiring agencies to submit a preliminary water supply and demand assessment by June first. The city has submitted the preliminary assessment. The second piece is requiring water suppliers to implement as a minimum. Level two shortage response action from their local water shortage contingency plans. So these regulations will remain in effect for one year unless the state board rescinds or extends them. In alignment with the State Water Resource Control Board action. SFPUC moved to level two of its water shortage contingency plan on May twenty fourth. This action increased the ten percent system wide water use reduction to eleven percent from the fiscal year twenty nineteen twenty baseline. So with the eleven percent system wide water reduction, Milbrae's share of the available water supply is six hundred million gallons. Uh which is a reduction of thirty nine million gallons from last year's allocation. And this is consistent with stage two shortage in Milbrae's water shortage contingency plan. So this chart shows the city's water savings goal of twelve percent in the fiscal year twenty two twenty three. Compared to the unconstrained demand. Uh so unconstrained demand is the demand if the city took no water conservation actions. So the key word is unconstrained. Um that's if we did nothing. Or no further actions, I should say. Uh so the red bar is unconstrained demand. The total water use estimated for our customers for next year, based on what we've been using before. Uh and then taking into account um any additional water savings we will get from our. Uh from our water shortage contingency plan actions. The blue bar shows the SFPUC voluntary allocation. So overall, um we have six hundred billion gallons of allocation and an estimated unconstrained demand of six hundred eighty four million gallons. Uh which means a conservation goal of twelve percent. So this twelve percent reduction target aligns with stage two of our water shortage contingency plan. Which is designed to achieve a water use reduction of up to fifteen percent. At stage two. So some of the actions uh included in stage two um of our water shortage contingency plan are. Expanding um our public information campaign. Uh instituting large landscape water budgets and restricting to designated watering days. Increasing water waste patrols and requiring use of recirculated water to operate decorative fountains, ponds and lakes. Um and also restrictions on vehicle washing and exterior washing of buildings. So the city has a very robust water shortage contingency plan that lays out our approach to achieving the necessary water use reductions. We've already started working on many of the actions needed to implement our water shortage contingency plan. Some of the steps we're taking, including working with the Bay Area Water Supply Conservation Agency and SFPUC. To expand public information campaign. Um including expanded outreach on our existing water conservation programs. We have free water saving devices for residents to pick up at city hall such as showerheads, timers, erators. Uh we've expanded our water loss management actions, specifically implementing a meter testing program to swap out inaccurate meters. Um so those are some of the steps we've already taken. So staff recommends that. Uh we that the council declare a water shortage emergency pursuant to Water Code, section three fifty. And adopt a resolution enacting the city's twenty twenty water shortage contingency plan stage two. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Council. Questions?
There are two hands up, Madam Mayor.
I can't see them. Hold on. Oh, here we go. Sorry about that. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Uh so Ms. Papajon, how does one determine if they have an inaccurate meter?
We.
Besides crying over our bills already.
So we have started, Suboska has a program for meter testing and uh we. Um signed up for that program this past fiscal year. And so we have been swapping out um twenty five meters over a ten month period and testing them. And so we're actually doing um sample testing on our meters and. Uh and we'll have the results, I'll finish the testing in a couple of months. So that's one way to do it. You know, the other, um I might lean on, I might defer to. Some more uh water experts to help answer that question, but we are pursuing the testing by swapping them out.
Okay, the faster that happens, the better, obviously. Uh because I mean, this is, I understand why we're doing this. I understand the recommended action. But it still hurts majorly. You're asking people to save more if they're gonna pay more. And you know, this doesn't make any sense to all of us who have to pay these enormous water bills. Uh I think we have to work on our communication with the residents, try to help them more so. Um this is very difficult to understand. Uh declaring an emergency, asking you to save more, yet the water bill keeps going up, up and up. So I really, I have to recommend to staff, you rush that um meter testing stuff along. And also our education to the public as to why our water bills are so high. Where are we? How many more main breaks are we having every year? Have we reduced that? What are we doing to help people save money here? And if we have anything else, my final question, if we have anything else, like. Do they sell anything when your sprinkler is on that, you know, the water is retained? It goes towards that way, um where it's supposed to be. We have huge wind in Milbrae. So if we can provide any more additional devices which would help people. Um if they're gonna use their water directed in the right place, so it doesn't go down the drain. That kind of stuff would be exceptionally helpful here. So I appreciate all your hardworking effort, but we need to be. More proactive and more educational, please. Thank you very much.
Yeah, Mayor, Mayor, can I make a few comments here? And and I and I I think it's great what the vice mayor is saying, but also I think for the public. They need to know what the kind of the root cause of this is. And that is that the state of California has failed to provide water based on the population. So. We're in a situation where we're managing the drought. Um you can see on the chart that. You know, we have a demand right now of a little over six hundred million gallons um because of the drought management. Our our actual supply that we're guaranteed by Bosqua in in our contract is three point two billion gallons a day. Um so a lot of this is being driven by SFPUC and the state of California, kind of like housing policy. It just trickles down and we have these meetings and, you know, trying to figure out, you know, how we manage these problems. But we also have twenty two hundred housing units. That through our Rena numbers, A bag in state of California have said, hey, city, you got to build those between twenty three, uh twenty twenty three and twenty thirty. Where are we gonna get the water? How are we gonna accommodate that infrastructure? And supply the health safety needs of those no you of of those new units that the state of California is demanding on us. So these are some real difficult questions that need to be solved at the state legislative level. Um and and actually, the state legislator needs to get involved in the local level and listen to us more and help us manage through these crises. Because it's it's, you know, you can see that if we have one more year, two more years of this drought. Um in Milbrae specifically, we'll have to declare a health emergency. Because we won't have sufficient, we don't produce water, we buy water. And so we're not water producers based on agreements, you know, over the years. And so we're reliant on SFPUC. And we're reliant on the Bosqua, you know, deal. So um I don't, I I totally understand what you're saying, Vice Mayor. And everybody needs to help in low flow toilets and low. to help in low-flow toilets and low-flow showerheads and not watering and all those, but also we need to fix our major, you know, infrastructure problem with, with wholesale water and our ability to access that water, especially as we have all these growth demands on us.
And storage.
Yeah, and storage. How are, how are our storage plans going?
Talk to our newly elected Assembly people.
Well, we'll see that. And then the, the medians in, on Mil Camino here, we've got dead trees. We need, as sure as Councilmember Schneider, hopefully will bring up more bioswells. We've got to get these.
Yeah, and recycle water in our treatment plant. I mean, that's, you know, and the council had that as a, as a top priority goal, you know, adopted last month.
Sorry to interrupt. Excuse me.
Well, I don't think it's an interruption. I think that your, your issues come up that everybody normally reacts to. That's what our, our constituents are paying these bills, and we're getting fined by saving water. And what our city manager just said, it's bigger than us. It's, we're, 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 we're like, you know, we're like the person with the ball and chain on our leg. We're dr, they're dragging us. We're, we need to, we need to really contact our state legislator. There's no reason that we don't store water in many of the storms that we've had this year. We let it run off, they let it run off because there's no storage. We have a surplus in billions of dollars that none of it goes towards that. Well, I won't say none because I'll get hit in the head with that. But we need, we're, we're bearing the brunt, Millbrae, and everybody else locally, different, different cities along this, for, for our, our state legislation not taking care of this situation.
Again, one more thing that you can take to your agenda, is that not-
Excuse me, sir. We're, we're almost there with you. We're going to, we're going to go to Councilmember Schneider, and then we'll open this up to the public.
I, I, I hear what y'all are saying, and I agree. That said, we did not approve the implementation of a cistern during the Rec Center rebuilt, and all of us local governments with money from the state of California, and I think that's a great ask with their budget surplus since the governor doesn't like what was sent to him, that the money should be coming back to cities for recycled water and stormwater runoff storage. That is part of our local answer. But my question's, but I, city manager to the budget, let's get a letter drafted to the governor saying, we are in a great way to start becoming a water producer with our tertiary water, but we need help, and that budget shouldn't be wasted frivolously. The budget surplus needs to go back to those of us who are being required to build housing. My other questions, this is more to Andrea. Andrea, I hate to say it, I was planning on getting the house painted this year. It's been 15 years. They usually power wash a house, but you're saying no more washing of houses. Is that an absolute, and what will that do to the house painting industry? And is there a way, if I had my house painter do it on my prescribed watering day, would that be a workaround? And I, I know that sounds facetious, but I mean it seriously.
I hear your question. I, I believe our water shortage contingency plan stage two does address, address that. I would need to look it up. I might defer to Andre Johnson in case she has the answer about painted houses. I just don't have the answer off the top of my head. If Andre has it, then maybe she could speak up. She's with us today.
I've got three or four other questions that have to do with what, what, how people are going to respond with, with the new, I'm all for what you're setting forth. I completely agree, we've got to do it. But the other question is, and I'm trying to get a bathroom remodel ready, and it's a second-floor bathroom, and right now I collect the water while it's warming up in those blue buckets that we hand out to the public, and then I have to schlepp it outside so it's spilling all over my wooden floor. I worry about my 94-year-old mom who's going to be 95 in two months falling. And what I'd really love to do is have a piping system while I'm remodeling that could take that warm-up water, really not even gray water. It hasn't touched anything but come out to warm out and get it into a storm barrel or a rain barrel on the first, on the ground floor, but we don't have that code yet. Is it possible for the city to look at some advanced code improvements for water recovery in our homes for both remodel and new construction? That's probably stage three at the state level, but I don't want to, I, I'd love to do it now. I'll pay money for it now if I could do that. And given how long I have to wait for the tile, I have a few more months on that. The other thing that happened during the Rec Center opening was the number of people came up and talked to me about fake grass, and most of them do not know that Millbrae has a moratorium on artificial turf. And one of my dear neighbors that I talk to all the time, we just happened to be talking because they tore up our street today, and he said, oh, I was going to put it in the backyard. And I said, well, here are the list of health issues. And he has three little ones, and a dog. And he goes, you know what, Anne, I wish I knew this, I'm not doing it anymore. Thank you for that. So I think as we turn out the education pieces on water conservation, let's make sure that we get our landscape architect design guidelines that are in the pipeline right now to let residents know that there are low-water options, that it's perfectly okay to let your grass die this summer. It's the easiest thing to come back, but we should have a plan to save our trees. And if they're city street trees, we need to work with our residents that they are helping to keep our street trees alive because they keep our, our climate cooler, which means we're not losing as much moisture to evapotranspiration. And then finally, we need, we really need to push out that information about artificial turf on that. So those are just some additional things, and I would include in that, and it wasn't in the slide unless I missed it, but it's in the staff report, SFPUC is increasing our water rates by 13.7%. Did I get that right? I am all in favor of saying SFPUC, some of our rates are so high because they didn't do the maintenance they should have done for decades, and all of their customers are left with that now. So the, the infrastructure, the piping, increasing dam storage, if that's the issue, i, is there. But let's make sure that SFPUC gets the credit for the increased costs. Thank you.
Yes, and then I would like to defer to Andre Johnson if she happens to have the answer about using water for, with a newly painted house.
Yes, on that point, Councilmember, I, if I recall, it is an exception in your shortage contingency plan.
But to be honest, I'm happy to arrange it for being on my watering day, whatever day that will be. My God. So, I mean, let's just think about how this is going to roll out as we educate people. Brown lawns are okay, artificial turf is not.
Yeah, and then I would also defer to our building department about our codes for piping from shower to storage. So I think that would be maybe more of a building expertise area, and if, if anyone from building would like to speak up, that's, that's fine, too.
And the only other thing I would add, Andrea, because you weren't with us, I believe the Gateway Project is going to have bioswells and stormwater collection for reuse on site, as was Sarah Station. I don't know if Anton agreed to it. If these new housing laws, SB 35 or 330, take away our ability to do climate resiliency work, then we've got to let the governor and our Assembly people and Senator know on that. So let's keep a list of all the things where these housing laws are stopping us from doing the best thing.
Yeah, just real quick on that note, that, that's a different program. That's a Clean Water Act to retain water on-site so it doesn't, or doesn't roll into our storm drain systems. So that's a, a different issue.
I, I just think it's all great, but let's make sure the public knows, knows how to do it. Thank you.
Anders.
I'm happy to make a motion when you're ready, Mayor.
Okay. We make, we'll take it right now. But I got to close the public comment first, and Anders wants to talk next.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I thank you, Ms. Papa John. You know, I think we're, we have to keep everything in perspective here. I think we're a growing city. It's a population, both, you know, from the residential as well as commercial. We have TOD2 coming with 200 units. We've got many other multi-residential and mixed-use project coming in the pipeline. We also have, you know, a new biotech campus that's coming in that's going to bring in thousands of high-paying jobs, which means thousands of new daytime residents, traffic coming in. So, you know, as we consider the reduction of these water usages, you know, we have to keep this, things in perspective that we have a growing population from our city as well, from 23,000, we're expecting thousands of new residents and daytime residents coming in. You know, recycle water, as we all have just talked about earlier, the production of that recycled water really must be a high priority for us. We can use it for landscaping, toilet flushing, drains, whatever. And, and for all these new density housing and commercial development, I think that's essential. If we can establish a recycling agency as part of providing recycled water, it will put revenue back into our enterprise account and would help reduce our water bill in our city. And I think, I still think that the dual plumbing, you know, really should be a priority as we, you know, really should, for resources, drinking water down our toilets and our urinals. And so if we can be a leader on this plumbing code update, I think we can easily beat and meet, meet if not beat, is a percent reduction goal. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you. Okay, I think councils completed their comments unless Councilmember Oliver has something?
No, I think a lot has been said. I think we may want to take a look at our building codes and see what more can be done to promote water efficiency, whether that's on-site recycle, water recycling systems for large developments or rainwater capture. I think there's probably more we can done, can do. I know at the CCAG, Climate Management and Environmental Quality Committee, we had a discussion about the laundry to landscapes program, which I think is just getting started as sort of a pilot program, but that could also potentially be a way to help reduce water usage. Those are my comments I have for now. And that, it kind of feels like deja vu in a sense, Mayor, when we first, the two of us first came on the council, we were dealing with the 2013, 2014 drought, which was one of the worst in recent history at that time, and had to enact the level two restrictions as well.
I was thinking the same thing.
Hoping for a better year next year.
And we got it in that year, too. Next year was just fine. Okay, Alice Quong, your hands up.
Hi, good evening. Thank you all. Good evening. Ready?
Good evening.
Okay, this is Alice, and I think 1086 Clearfield Drive, and thank you all. And as, as residents, and I just saw you my water bills. And there's going to be only two people living in the house, and my usage for two months, 156, but my total bill is 417.56. I just do a base calculation beside my usage and cost me $216 for water surface, $50, soil surface, 117.80, and I saw you, usage, 46.34, clear bay, 47.42. And I just read today the load for the public hearing seems like the water seems is self-support enterprise. And my question is, who is going to monitor those fund spending? It doesn't make sense. My usage is $156, but my total bill comes up with more than 400. Who's going to monitoring, monitoring those? Suppose utilities, those, whether even is a public company, stock company, whatever, they should not be making a lot of profit by supporting utilities. I just, that's my questions. Another hand, even though everybody is trying to save water, we do know, and from tonight's or at the council pressure, even the city managers are all living in the same city. I saw you're all looking at the same surprise bill, or sometimes, you know, where the compass bill every other month. And how about the governments, the states? They take our tests for every year. The test bill is waiting up every year for the property test, but we don't see any money to support our base no utilities expense. It doesn't make sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Alice. Do we have any other public comments? Okay, I'm going to put public hearing, and Councilmember Schneider was going to make a motion.
Yep, happy to make a motion. Would love to see more stuff coming from building.
I'll second it. Link, we call for the vote, please.
I'm so sorry. Councilmember Snyder?
Yes.
Councilmember Oliver?
Hi.
Councilmember Fang?
I think he said you-
Councilmember Fang?
He tried to say yes. Now-
I thought I said I. Did I not get?
I didn't hear you.
No, thank you. Vice Mayor Papin?
Yes.
Mayor Aliva?
Yes.
Item number 13 is passed by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you. Okay, now we are going to go to item number-
16 is what, it, it's a kind of a related item. We still have the same consultants, Mayor, so item 16, and I, you know, for just very, very brief on this.
Okay, so do we have to open up public hearing again?
This is, this is actually not a public hearing, and I, this is an informational item.
Perfect.
Yep. Mayor, Mayor Aliva and councilmembers, thank you for your time. Andrea Papa John, Environmental Programs.
Andrea, the PowerPoint is, is in a different mode.
Oh, thank you. I need to ask this every time.
No problem.
I apologize. Please forgive me, I'm just focused on presentation, not the technology. Okay, so let me just do this one more time.
Are we then coming back to 12, or did I miss 12?
We're coming back.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, let me do this one more time. Okay, so can you see the presentation?
Perfect.
Okay, thank you, and thank you, City Manager Williams. I appreciate you calling that out for me. So this is just informational, very briefly. As I mentioned, as part of the State Water Board adopted resolution on May 24th, one of the pieces was to submit a preliminary water supply and demand assessment by June 1st. We have submitted that assessment. Urban wires, urban water suppliers are required to prepare an annual water supply and demand assessment, AWSDA, and submit an annual water shortage assessment report based on the 2020 urban water management plan. So our final report is due July 1st. And actually, you've seen this, but we just wanted to bring it up. This is what we submitted, the annual requirement beginning this year going forward. So we'll use this comparison to project the water conservation goal for our upcoming year, July 2022 to June 2023, and enact the appropriate actions to conserve water. So as mentioned, our water conservation goal is 12%, and as discussed, we've already began taking steps to conserve water, and, you know, thank you for the approval to enact stage two. We will continue to take actions in stage two of our water shortage contingency plan. And actually, that is it. Thank you. If you have any, if, that was just informational. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Council, any questions? Councilmember Schneider?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Papa John. A quick question, when I read through this, I wondered if there were ways we could increase some potable supply by reusing secondary water, and it made me think of all the construction around the city. I'm guessing they're already using recycled water for dust control, but do we need to do an ordinance to require it for any new construction, including residential construction dust control? Do we, what about median watering, and what can we do for tree watering? So that might free up potable- Do we, what about median watering and what can we do for tree watering? So that might free up potable for those three uses. And again, I'm worried that our trees will die with an extended drought.
Thank you for your comments. Um, we can look into that. Uh, Andre, is there any comments you'd like to make on that as well or?
You're correct. Those are all items that can be investigated as part of the city's ongoing work to look at recycled water options. Um, it's a longer term project rather than near term efforts that could support this current year's water use efficiency.
Well, it's just that Alexandria is using dust control measures right now. Uh, and Tremel Crowe, the Office Depot Project, if they break ground in March, they'll be using it. So it'll be within fiscal year twenty two, twenty three. So I would love to see you guys look into that. If we're going to do the median strip work that's in our goals. Then if they can handle the recovered water with whatever chemicals are left in them in secondary, those would all free up potable water. So I strongly encourage that it will come back to us with a yes.
Yeah, I, I think, again, council member, we can look into that. I think we can research right now what municipalities are selling recycled water. Um, and and in other cities, I know that they have conditioned. Um, construction watering and that type of thing to use reclaimed water, even if they have to ship it in from, you know, water tanks, water trucks and that type of thing. So this is definitely something that has been done and we can look into.
Well, Burlingame is going to be breaking a lot of ground on Rollins Road and right near Mills High School, too. So maybe we'll have some markets and we'll get money from outside. It could also be for street cleaning, I think, but that has that other health factor in it. So, thank you.
Okay, that was an informational item. It doesn't appear that we have any other hands raised. All right, let's go on to a public here, open up public hearing for.
Item number twelve, Mayor.
Yes, please. Can we conduct a public hearing for the wastewater rates change for the fiscal year twenty twenty two, twenty three to fiscal year twenty six, twenty seven? And future wholesale water rates pass through and adopt a resolution? With the updated sewer rates and the future wholesale water rate pass through. And this is an action item, counsel. And I'm sure we have a presentation here.
We do, Mayor. Thank you very much. And I'll hand it over to Mike Sung and then our consultant here. Um, but just a few opening comments. This is, this is also known as a Prop two eighteen public hearing. Um, Prop two eighteen, as you know, is a protest vote, uh, that if we receive. Uh, uh, more than a fifty percent protest, uh, then we don't move forward with with the rate increase. To to get about fifty percent or more is a little over three thousand votes. Uh, as close of business today at five o'clock, we've received one hundred and one votes. Um, so that's how many we received. Again, we need three thousand. Any testimony this evening is still part of the Prop two eighteen. Um, public hearing process. So anyone wishing to render a, um, a protest vote can do so verbally and orally. Tonight during the public hearing, after the public hearing is closed and then the vote closes. And if we do receive votes tonight, we'll tally those up and inform the council publicly. As of five o'clock tonight, one hundred and one votes. So with that, I will hand it over to Mr. Mike Sung and Alex Handler. Um, for the line share of the presentation.
Um, thank you, Sammy Andrew Williams. Good evening, uh, Mayor Aliva, Vice Mayor, um, Pappen and esteemed, uh, council members. So, um. As part of the Prop two eighteen process, we've gone to a public hearing. We've noticed people. And let me just back up a little bit on the timeline as to how we came to this. So back in August of twenty twenty one, the city had commissioned Bartle Wells to do a rate study on, uh. The sewer rates and then, um, they did a pretty thorough job. We went back to the, um, subcommittee meeting. Um. I believe it was March twenty eighth and then, uh, subcommittee had recommended moving this to a council on, uh, April twelfth. And then council had directed us to go ahead and, um. Um, publish a Prop two eighteen notice, which we promptly did on April twenty seventh, which is more than forty five days before today's public hearing. Um, if adopted, um. And if there is no majority protest, um, anything that would be adopted would go into effect on, um, July one. So just wanted to give kind of a background on that. Um, with that, um, I'll turn this over to our consultant over at Bartle Wells, Mr. Alexander.
Thank you, and nice to see everyone online here. Uh, we thought since it's been a couple of months since this was, you know, last brought to the council that we'd give a kind of a quick summary. For the council's sake and also for public's sake. Um, and I'll just mention, I heard there a minute ago. Uh, someone just mentioned that your sewer utility is a enterprise fund and it is. Most of the revenues come from your rate. So over time, your rates have got to be adequate to fund all the costs of the system. And a hundred percent of the revenues go to sewer related expenses. There is no money going to the general fund. Anyone who pays the sewer rates, every dollar spent on wastewater expenses. So just a background on the rates, you haven't raised rates. Actually, it's almost three years now. Um, last rate increase was July one, twenty nineteen. Since then, the city's been able to get by with no rate increases by deferring some expenses temporarily. And also refunding some outstanding debt for savings. In addition to that, the city also deferred to five percent increases that had been scheduled to go into effect for the clean bay charges. Um, so those were also deferred. So for this study, as Mike mentioned, we worked to update the financial projections, which haven't been updated in about seven years. Look at sewer rate options and the bottom line is that you do need sewer rate increases with the main drivers being. Supporting prudent levels of adequate funding for your sewer capital program. You've got a lot of aging facilities. Lot of infrastructure pipelines have been in the ground for fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty years. And you need to make these ongoing investments for safe and reliable service. Also, you got to keep your revenues aligned with operating cost inflation with a goal of also supporting balanced budgets over the long run. On the next slide, just a quick summary of findings of the analysis indicates the need for six percent. Annual sewer rate increases in each of the next five years. We try to phase it in gradually is the general approach we recommend. We're also recommending some rate structure modifications, mostly on the commercial side. And what this is, is a simplification of your sewer customer classes for the commercial customers. And realigning the rates with the cost of service, which hasn't been done in a bit. What this is going to result in is the first year, even though it's six percent overall rate increases, the first year. The rate increases are going to vary a little bit by customer classes. The rates are realigned and due to the the modifications. Um, your commercial rates are still going to remain very reasonable. Your residential customers will actually benefit from this because there's no increases to the residential. Quantity charge component of the rates for the next two years. So there'll be the same, uh, charges that they will see for five years in a row, since it's been three years since the the last rate increase. Um, so overall, although it's six percent rate increases residences for the first two years. For a typical home will see less than a four percent rate increase. On top of that, there's a recommendation for to continue deferring. The previously adopted increases to the clean bay charges. You've already deferred them the last couple of years and you can do that. For the foreseeable future with the understanding that that will be reevaluated in future years and you can always implement those when needed. Onto the next slide. Uh, I mentioned there's some changes recommended for the commercial customer classes. So you can see that in the bottom. Portion of this slide where it shows the current customer classes on the left. And over on the far right, the proposed customer classes. So what's being proposed is instead of having a commercial rates for. You know, various specific types of enterprises to transition to a slightly simpler system of rates based on wastewater strength classifications. So for example, you can look on the bottom of the the chart on the left there. You can see restaurants, food processors and supermarkets, which are currently three separate customer categories. They all have similar wastewater strength and they would transition over on the the right side to a high strength category. And moving on to the next slide, that all feeds into the proposed sewer rates. These were included in the notices that were mailed out to all the customers. And property owners. Uh, again, I'm not going to read all the numbers off the table. But just reminding everyone that sewer charges include two components. On the top, we show the fixed charges that get paid regardless of usage. A lot of the sewer system is fixed costs, a big portion of the overall cost. So that's a portion of the charge. And on the bottom portion of the table are the quantity charges. I'll point out the residential charges are currently six dollars and sixty two cents per hundred cubic feet. They'd stay that way for the next couple of years before escalating and you can see what happens with the commercial charges, too. The other thing I wanted to point out, residential charges are billed. Per hundred cubic feet of needed water use only during the winter water months to make sure people aren't paying for outdoor irrigation. Also, your quantity charges are billed for hundred cubic feet, but that's not something most people generally think of in those units of hundred cubic feet. Uh, one hundred cubic feet equals about seven hundred forty eight gallons. So. Your current residential charge of quantity charge of six dollars and sixty two cents. That equates to about eighty nine cents per hundred gallons. It would stay that way for the next couple of years and phase into. A little over a dollar, dollar five per hundred gallons by the end of five years. Moving on to the next slide. Um, just reminding everyone that Mill Bray offers a twenty five percent. Discount, a low income discount based on, uh, you know, income criteria. That's twenty five percent discount of the fixed charge. Not every city offers this, so it's nice you do that. The the eligibility, the city doesn't get into the weeds on this. It's simply based on participation in P G and E's care program. So for folks out there who are on the P G and E's care program. Um, and haven't yet, you know, signed up to get the city's discount. You can do so. The information on that was included on the Prop two eighteen notices sent out to all the customers. So people should have that information or they can contact the city. Um, and the charge, you know, the the discount currently is about a hundred seventy six dollars per year. And that would increase as the the rates are projected to increase to about two hundred thirty six dollars per year over the next five years. Moving on to the next slide. So that's it on sewer rates. The other item before council that we're discussing. Is a wholesale water rate pass through. Now, Mill Bray, like many cities on the peninsula, you have to buy your water, a hundred percent of it from San Francisco. Public Utility Commission or the S F P U C, as it's often called. Uh, as as folks know, S F P U C wholesale rates have been, they didn't change for the last few years. They were held steady, but they are projected to increase. Starting this upcoming July one. And we don't know what's going to happen in future years. Uh, there may be some unanticipated increases due to drought and other factors. Now, there is a section of the government code that allows agencies to auto, to authorize automatic pass-throughs. So as the future wholesale rates go up, your quantity charges can go up also. So the recommendation. Is for the city to adopt this authorization, not just from, you know, escalating off the current rates, but anything over five dollars per unit. Of the wholesale rates that the city would be able to pass that through in its charges. So if the S F P U C rates went up to five twenty five. You'd be able to escalate your charges by an additional twenty five percent. Um, this does two things for the city. One, it gives you protection in case of unexpected wholesale rate increases. That you can pass those through without taking a big financial hit to the city's water enterprise. And number two, adopting this authorization, it's good for up to five years. So it may enable the city to be able to defer needing to go through another Prop two eighteen process for water rates for a number of years. So there's two benefits there and you don't have to do these pass-throughs. This is just giving you the authorization to do them if a council authorized it. And if you did authorize it, there's a process you have to go through where you have to send notification out to customers. It's just an informational notice, you know, thirty day advance notification. Onto the next slide, I think Mike already covered kind of the process. So here we are at the end of the process tonight. You're you're considering these rate increases and as Mike mentioned, they would start going to effect on July one. Of this upcoming year and phase in over the ensuing five years. And that concludes the kind of the summary that we wanted to cover. Turn it back over to, uh, Finance Director and City Council.
Uh, thank you, Alex. Um, are there any questions?
Counsel? Gina, the vice, vice mayor.
Uh, thank you. Very thorough report. Uh, what's again. Trying to justify this to the public. We, we, we're not showing what work has been done, what work continues to get done. There's, there's no end game ever. To this and it's very, very frustrating. We just keep raising water rates and sewer rates and. Where's the end game? When are we going to get on top of all of our infrastructure and the plan for that instead of being proactive? Um, I mean, we're just reactionary and we have to, it doesn't seem like we're ever going to catch up. So, I mean, I get it. Thank you, but I would really love to see a plan where we are not just. You know, trying to catch up all the time.
That, anybody else? No other, no other council members? Do we have a public comment?
Yeah, Mayor, this, this is a public hearing, so I believe, I don't know if you opened the public hearing or not, but we have to formally open the public hearing.
Yeah, she did open the public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So is there any public comment? I don't see any hands raised.
Mayor, I do not see any hands. As well.
So this is an action item.
So do you want to close public hearing?
Yes, I'm going to close the public hearing and I want to know if there is a motion to approve.
Well, Mayor, if I, if I may, just to go on record to report the official vote for the proposition two eighteen protest vote. Uh, which, uh, I'll, I'll confirm this with, uh, Mike Sung and Elaine Tran, our city clerk. There's one hundred and one no votes. And a little over three thousand were necessary to get to the, uh, to the majority protest. So obviously significantly far away from the. Needed three thousand votes for majority protest.
Okay, Councilmember Oliver.
Yeah, just a quick comment to reiterate, um, in the presentation. You know, this is, uh, at this time of six percent sewer rate annual increase, which, you know, it's not nothing, but it's. Um, much less than where we were about five or six years ago and we approved, uh, the last rates. And we're looking at double digit annual increases. So we are stabilizing a bit. And, um, water rate increases at this point in time are only for the, um. The pass through, um, S F P C. Again, we're talking about double digit, per double digit rate increases. Um, so, you know, I think this is certainly a step in the right direction to, uh, being more stable. And, you know, while everybody wants the rates to stop increasing or to go down. Um, that's not particularly realistic, just because of all the capital needs we have. But I think this shows that we are certainly moving in the right direction there. That we're no longer, at least not at this time, having to impose a double digit, uh, annual rate increases. That's all that I have. Uh, I don't know if you need a motion, if you have one.
I would, yes, please make a motion.
Yeah, I'd be happy to move approval.
Thank you, Ruben. Councilmember Oliver. Councilmember Schneider?
I'm happy to second that. I agree with everything that Council, uh, Holber said. I do, and I might have missed it in the presentation, for residents, for this one section of their utility bill. They're not going to see an increase for two years. This was as gentle, I think, as we can do it. But every time we defer maintenance or we for refer defer system upgrades, it's going to cost more. So I, I know it's tough, but we do, we are one of fairly unique in giving people. If they're in the care program from P G and E a way out and to the public, just make, you know, let us know, talk to us. Um, if you're having problems getting the care rate and you need that kind of help, but I'm happy to make a second.
Thank you.
And I thank staff and I thank our consultant for this. Um, this was, um. A good part of the infrastructure subcommittee time and it was time well spent.
Thank you. Elaine?
All right. Councilmember Snyder?
I.
Councilmember Oliver?
Hi.
Councilmember Fang?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Pappen?
Yes.
Mayor Aliva?
Yes.
Public hearing, item number twelve, is passed by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you. Okay, so we are going to move to uh, existing business. And that is to receive the proposed capital budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three and adopt a resolution adopting the capital budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three and a resolution of the Millbury City Council establishing the appropriations limit for the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. Council, this is action item, it's ten, ten after ten. It's, everybody take a stretch and make it through here, please.
Mayor, if I may, uh, so just a point of clarification, this, this is under the public hearing item actually, because it, it is a public hearing for adoption of our capital improvement program budget. Um, the city council has seen, you know, a- all of this previously in our study session, so uh, maybe uh, Finance Director Mike Sung, if we, if we can, you know, kind of be efficient here and, and, and kind of cut to the chase and then open up for questions if, if that serves the city council.
Tom, I-
You know, kind of expedite.
It's not under, it's not under public-
I don't think it's a public hearing. I, I, we've never had a public hearing to adopt the capital budget.
Okay, my, on my-
It, well, it was-
Maybe I have a different agenda.
I mean, there is an element of the appropriations limit, but that doesn't require a, a hearing. That just requires a notice that that Mike Sung and staff have properly uh, placed.
Yeah, yeah. So, so that's a good point. Um, City Attorney Casman, we do, we, we combined the two resolutions into this one item, actually.
Exactly. But we still don't need a public hearing.
Okay.
Great. Okay. So then let's move forward with Mike. Are you ready?
Um, yes, I am.
Beautiful. Thank you.
Um, thank you. Um, thank you, Jane. If you could, uh, put it on to uh, slideshow. Um, and on to the next page. So, um, just a really quick recap, um, for the um, capital um, budget. Um, back on May tenth, we had our um, city council meeting and um, our goal was to basically um, coordinate everything and minimize disruptions moving forward. So we're trying to do that with our one dig policy so that we can have everything kind of lined up, um, so that we can be more efficient. Um, previous years, we've had it so that uh, there were all sorts of the different projects and we had to pave and repave. Moving forward, um, we're actually trying to um, optimize this and um, have everything planned out. So water's um, done, then sewer's done, and then anything else is done so that we can pave everything um, right afterwards. Um, in June, um, on June sixth, I believe is uh, last Monday, we also went to the um, planning commission to um, basically have them review it uh, to make sure that it's aligned with the general plan. And they've actually adopted a resolution for that as well. And that's attached in the um, staff report. We've also um, accelerated many projects um, due to um, different risk assessments. Um, as previously mentioned before, we're trying to actually be a little bit more proactive so that we don't have to have as many um, water main breaks or any other types of um, failures that are caused by um, an aging infrastructure, so that if we can do things a little bit more proactively, we will um, actually save the residents quite a bit of money. Um, next slide, please. So just a really quick recap on the um, CIP budget overview for twenty-two, twenty-three. And kind of see over here, um, most of it's um, water and sewer. Um, and the bigger um, projects um, include um, water um, for the water tank, uh, the second half of it. We started it this year. We are anticipating finishing that up uh, next year. And then for um, sewer um, as well, um, there's a whole bunch of uh, different projects that are, I'm attached to that and our interim um, Public Works Director, I'll actually go over some of the bigger projects here. Uh, next slide, please. So just a really quick recap, we have um, sufficient fund balance, at least for the next um, couple of years, um, moving forward so that that we can actually um, move forward with a lot of these uh, proactive um, steps. And uh, just wanted to kind of show what the water and the sewer rates are. It's not um, going to be um, easy in the outer years. Um, you'll probably notice that there's a really, really large number at the end of fiscal year um, twenty-seven, and that's really um, mainly the um, recycle water project. That's going to be like fifty-five million dollars. We're probably really going to need um, some type of federal grant um, for that piece. That's an actually a really expensive project, but kind of wanted to just kind of show you what it kind of looks like for the next uh, few years. Uh, next slide, please, Jane. Um, so with that, um, I'm going to go ahead and turn this over to Craig. He's going to talk about some of the um, big projects here um, for CIP, for streets and some of the other items.
Hello, um, Admiral Mayor Emmy Olivia, Vice Mayor Gina Pappen, and council members. Um, for our streets capital improvement program, um, the highlights are annual street repair program, brief, or pavement uh, pavement restoration on Broadway, Awani, San and Selmo, Landing Lane and La Mancha. Affordable Housing and Sustainable Communities Program Grant, the city received a three million Affordable Housing and Sustainable Communities Program to address pedestrians and bicycle, bicyclists needs to and from the transit center. Parking meter implementation to study and implement parking meters in Millbrae. El Camino Real, Millbury Avenue Landscape Median Improvements to begin planning, design and outreach for landscape improvements along El Camino and Millbrae Avenue. Sewer, sewer collection system improvements. Landing Lane, La Mancha, San and Selmo, Awani, Vista Grande and Arroyo Seco. Aviador, East Millbury Avenue Capacity Upgrade, replace sewers in the Aviador Avenue, Adrian Road area to increase capacity for developments. Recycle Water Project, Planning Phase Currently in Progress to Determine, to Determine Demand and Conveyance System. Water Capital Improvement, Skyline Tank, year two of the two-year skyline tank replacement project to replace existing tanks with a new one-point-five-million-gallon pre-stress concrete tank. Water Main Replacement, Downtown Broadway, Awani Drive, Vista Grande and Aviador Avenue to San Francisco, through San Francisco property. Storm, Arroyo Seco Vista Grande Storm Drain Bypass Project. Install new storm drain line on Vista Grande from the Linda Vista Avenue intersection to eight forty-one Vista Grande will divert flow from Arroyo Seco. It's reduced flooding onto property damage and damage. Tioga Helen Geraldine Drive Storm Name Improvements, Design of Storm Drain Improvements to Increase Capacity Along Tioga Helen Geraldine Drive. This is a Storm Drain Master Plan Tier One project to address insufficiencies. Hillcrest Underpass Hydraulic Study Peer Preview. Funding allocated to complete peer review of the hydraulic study for the Hillcrest Underpass. Landing Lane Area Hydrology and Stormwater Assessment. Funding allocated to complete Landing Lane Area Hydrology and Hydraulic Study. The five-year CIP will be updated as needed after study is complete. Parks Capital Improvement, Bayside Manor Park Renovation to design and reconstruction existing park, including new courts, turf, playground equipment and ADA improvements. Marina Vista Park renovation, the same. Mills Estate Park Planning Design, this funding will be used to begin design phase for the Mills Estate Park Reactivation Project. Vehicle Equipment Fund, Loxbury Pump Station Generator Replacement, City Hall Generator Replacement, Sewer Division Backon Vehicle. Facilities CIP, City Facilities Reboot Program, Council Chambers Upgrade, EV Charger City Fleet and Library Security Door. Engineering CIP, Public Works Standard Plans and Specifications Update, Review and Update Existing Public Works Standard Plans and Specifications. Comprehensive Infrastructure Replacement Plan Review, Existing Master Plans, Stormwater, Sewer and Pavement to identify and fill gaps and prioritize projects based on locations, conditions and needs.
So the, oh, thank you, Craig. Um, so the other piece we wanted to um, mention was that the appropriations are the GAN limit, um, which is um, basically um, California Government Code Section seven nine one um, zero. This was actually um, Prop four in nineteen seventy-nine. It requires each jurisdiction to establish by resolution their appropriations limit. So this was kind of designed to um, ensure that uh, we weren't overspending and that was something that um, the voters had done back in nineteen seventy-nine. And our appropriations limit uh, for twenty-two, twenty-three is forty-one million fifty-nine thousand, seven oh seven, which is an increase from the thirty uh, eight-point-six-seven million that we um, had in fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. And that's, we're not even close to the appropriations limit. And the factor that we're really looking at here is just the um, tax revenue, not the um, other services revenue. So um, we're well within that limit for the appropriations limit. Um, next slide, please, Jane. So we need two separate actions here. Our recommended actions are the um, adopt a resolution adopting the capital budget for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. And a separate um, action, which is to adopt the resolution establishing the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three appropriations limit at forty-one million fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred and seven thousand. And uh, with that, um, we're available for questions.
Councilmember Schneider?
Thank you, Mayor. You're, you're quick. Um, question on capital improvement. We look at it, it's really hard. It's traditional public works. It doesn't include trees. And I know I sound like a terrible tree hugger, but I looked at the line item for street improvements and some of the streets being looked at do include places where there are city parking strips where the trees have been removed. For whatever reason, over the decades, we haven't done a tree inventory and health inventory since nineteen ninety-two. So my question is, I'm happy to approve the budget, but is there a way that we look at those few streets that are in either Bayside Manor or the Highlands neighborhood? And if we're doing a street project, we look at trying to come up with a public, a residential city partnership like we did with the sidewalk repair program before COVID hit. And we get rid of this excess concrete and we get some trees planted. And in the future, under capital improvement, can we include the city's urban forest as part of critical infrastructure? I don't want to slow down the budget right now, but trees are a critical part of climate change. They're a critical part of climate resiliency work. And they really need to um, be recognized for the services they give us. Comments? No comments? I'm the only tree hugger? I'll put it back into my neighborhood. The biggest reason people hate trees in the Highlands neighborhood is it lifts up sidewalks. And then we have to pay for sidewalks. So how can we use the capital improvement budget and the street repair to also replenish our forest?
So, I, who's going to answer this question? This is, this is finance that's talking.
Yep, well, it is finance and it's also the, the, there's a street, there's a line item for sidewalk repair, which typically tends to be the Highland, but not only the Highlands neighborhood, but typically this neighborhood because of tree roots and um, and just all the parts of Millbury that have been cemented over, over the last couple of decades. And if we're doing work there, can we dig it up?
Maybe I can help. I, I think that the street tree planting and the parkway strips in the Highlands and then also in the Meadows neighborhood behind uh, back of sidewalk, which, which actually some of the public right-of-way does extend uh, twelve to, you know, foot to foot and a half back of sidewalk. Um, it is, is lays outside and separate from our street paving program. I think our street paving program, because we have limited funds and so much to do, should focus on, on street paving and repair from uh, curb to curb. I think a, a tree planting program would go into beautification um, and, and um,
Which has no budget.
Restoration forestation. Yeah, I mean, I mean, that, that is,
It has no budget.
I, I think in, in terms of priorities, our street repair should, should take a priority. Now, we are doing, we are doing tree replacement, um, you know, programs to where um, you know, the, the, the trees are relatively inexpensive. They're a hundred and fifty dollars to two hundred dollars a piece. And so we are working when property owners come in for building permits and that type of thing. If the original project was approved uh, with street trees, we are working with those property owners to then replant and, and reforest the street trees. So we are doing something, um, but because we do obviously have limited funds, um, you know how poor our streets are. Our PCI is one of the lowest um, in, in the county. And I think, you know, in terms of our funds, that our street repair, street maintenance program should be the priority. But I guess still keeping an eye-
Well, in that case, Tom, you're putting me in a position. Um, I just spent twelve thousand dollars to put air conditioning in my house in Mountain Dew because the HOA cut down all the trees and my house is now bloody hot down there. And that's not fair to my tenants, but that's twelve thousand dollars. The trees we've lost in Millbrae with most houses not having air conditioning, we could have people dying in the next long term, meaning three days plus heat wave. And there's no way to keep them cool in their house. There has to come a time that trees and they're part of infrastructure, as important as roads, gets credit in the budget.
Yeah, I, I agree. I, I don't disagree. What I'm saying is, is that i- it lays outside of our street fund. And there's a different way or a different priority that we can. I mean, I, I can bring back to the city council how many trees we planted over the last year. I'm telling you, it's, 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 it's more than the city's planted in the last, you know, probably twenty years, actually. Um, if you, if you do drive around, you're going to see um, that the city is working with residents through the building permit process and then working with them to replant.
So maybe streets is wrong. What about the sidewalk line item?
Yeah, I, I think sidewalks, I, I, I think that, you know, that, that's actually uh, more of a nexus uh, for sidewalk and maintaining the parkway strip than, than, than street maintenance and street repair. Sorry, uh, uh, Councilman, I just want to be real with you. I, I, I don't want to-
I hear you. It's just my frustration.
I, I wish we had five dollars to spend, but we only have a dollar and it's tough. Budgeting is tough. I get it. I understand. You know, but if you're asking me, our streets are in very, very bad shape. And, and I'm not discounting the need for reforestation either. I just think it's a different.
Well, then I would love, I, I have asked, and maybe it happened while you were out, that the urban forest come back as an infrastructure item to the infrastructure subcommittee.
Yeah, and we can do that. I think that's-
Let's do that and start talking about how we're going to arrange a plan. And it isn't just Highlands. If you look at Marina Vista, hardly any shade coverage. Bayside Manor, it, it can cover almost every neighborhood where I don't know the rules are up in, in the upper part of Mills Estates. Because even Ashton has, the city has a piece of right-of-way into the front yards on that. And some of the houses retain their trees and most of them have cut them down.
Yeah, and then Bayside Manor, I get a lot of requests actually from Bayside Manor residents about um, tree planting.
Okay.
So, okay, we can bring it back, we can bring it back to the infrastructure subcommittee.
Yeah, it just, they are infrastructure. And during the drought, more will die. And my friends at East Bay Mud, their, their number one priority to their residents in East Bay Mud is as you start doing drought work, make sure you water your trees. Everything else can grow back fairly fast. A tree cannot. Thank you. Okay, Council- I'm getting a little tired. It's been a long day.
All right, thank you.
Holber.
Um, thank you. So I saw the list of um, the, the street repairs, um, the listed streets. Um, and in the previous agenda, I had a, about SB one, there were a lot more streets listed uh, for both prepare and or maintenance and rehabilitation. Find that what's different?
Yeah, Councilman, that's a great question. I had that conversation with staff earlier about making sure that our gas tax funding um, streets align with our CIP. And um, I think uh, Jane, uh, is Jane Cal can respond to that. I mean, there are more projects with our listed uh, in the um, in the, in the gas tax file than-
Yeah, I don't want to go backwards to an item that's already been approved. That does seem like a lot of projects were, you know, half a million dollars. Um, so I, I hope we can get all that done. I've put this to you. Um and then one other comment I noticed on the facility improvement projects that had a total of uh four hundred and fifty thousand with several projects, City Hall's reroute, City facilities reroute program, council chamber upgrade, EV charger, uh library within public works, standard plans and specifications update, conference infrastructure placement plan. Um now, my understanding from the technology subcommittee meetings we have is that the council chamber upgrade alone would be about that amount. And the four hundred to five hundred. Um says that number perhaps out of date?
Could, could you say that again, Councilmember Holiver?
There's a list of several projects that total four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, point four five million under facilities improvement projects. And my understanding, where we've been told that the technology subcommittee is the council chambers upgrade alone is approximately that amount. Um so that amount may be out of date potentially based on the bids that we receive.
Thank you.
Mike, um, Son, can you uh?
I, I think that, sure. I think the um, Jane, can you go back to that page? Can we see what that was? I think it was a hundred and fifty thousand um is what it was listed as. We can go back. Here we go. So the council chambers upgrade, I think we had originally listed about a hundred and fifty thousand as the um funding for it. And um, uh, most of it was um supposed to come from the um PEG funds. Um with the additional information that is probably a little bit um um a slightly higher amount, we do believe that uh the rest of the funding um can come from um other sources uh such as um impact fees. So we will be upgrading, uh we will be updating that um in, in the future. But with like impact fees, usually that um is uh budgeted separately since that's really um onto the side. But for our regular funds, um like the um PEG funds, that's actually what usually shows up in the CIP.
Weren't the park projects funded primarily by impact fees?
Um, a lot of the park projects um would be, uh but we usually go to council um separately for each of the items because those are pretty big dollar amounts.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Vice Mayor Pepin?
Oh, thank you very much. Uh. Okay, thank you for the um presentation. It would be very helpful to us to see how these projects progress throughout the year. Um, we get a bunch of these and we never see, you know, where they are in the process and as we go through all this too. So it would be very helpful to see what we are actually able to accomplish here. On the sidewalk repairs and such, um I think we need to work with the public. In other words, find some local contractors that people can um have economy of scale. If their neighborhood has a whole bunch of uneven sidewalks, but I mean, let's try to help our neighbors and the residents here. So they're not all stuck with uh lifted sidewalks and everything like that. Um that would be a wonderful service to provide even as we go through this process here. As far as the trees go and Councilmember Schneider's point here, I'm deeply concerned about the dead trees. We have, you know, we talk about a water shortage and we are at high risk of fire. We need to focus on dead trees and getting them out. So I, I think that is almost a necessity that has to happen in our city before we end up in big trouble. We've got some canyons, we've got, and we don't necessarily own those canyons either. So if it's PG&E or whomever, that has to be a focus here. And I know that that's not in here, but that we definitely have to identify those for the safety of the city overall. Uh I will say on the parks, I'm hoping we can look for some grant money to help that process along. They have the Kaboom projects, things like that. I mean, I would, if Central Park is just an outstanding success, kids are having a blast on the new equipment. Let's, you know, I would love to see that in all of our parks sooner rather than later because the community benefit is so outstanding. So I know we don't have money growing on trees here. We're doing the best we can. But if we can stretch it a little bit more, uh that would be, that would be great. And, and I will say, please, the state has their GAN Act or whatever. They need to spend money. So let's expect some unexpected money from the state and be able, put ourselves in a position to spend it damn fast. So whether if it's more street money or whatever, I would love to see us take advantage of whatever falls from the governor's budget and put that to use if we can. So let, let's hopefully ask our state legislators right now if we can get any additional funding to help some of these projects along. Uh, I know, I wish we could fix everything, but thank you.
So, uh Vice Mayor, is that a motion to approve?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Uh, see, did I forget anybody? No.
Second.
You're, Councilmember Holiver seconded. Perfect. Elaine, can we call for a vote, please?
Of course. Councilmember Snyder?
Yes.
Councilmember Holiver?
Hi.
Councilmember Fang?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pepin?
Yes.
Mary Leva?
Yes.
Item number four passed by a vote of five to zero.
Okay.
Item number what? Fourteen.
Fourteen, thank you.
One more, Elaine, just one more.
One more.
I was still awake. I just want you to know.
Okay, our uh next item, last item will be uh the resolutions, it's new business, resolution supporting the multi-jurisdictional bike, bicycle sharing program and application to San Mateo County Transportation Authority for Measure A, Alternative Congestive Relief, and Measure W, Transportation Demand Management Program Funding. This is an action item and who's doing this report?
Thank you, Mayor. Andrea Papajon will be providing the staff presentation.
Great, thank you. Okay.
Feel-good, good news report, by the way.
Yes, way to end it.
All right, here we go. Let me make sure I can get this up right. Can you see my screen?
Perfect.
Great, thank you, Mary Leva, Vice Mayor Pepin, council members. Thank you for this opportunity. Andrea Papajon, Environmental Programs. Um purpose of the presentation is to recommend adopting a resolution in support of the Transportation Authority. Alternative congestion relief, transportation demand management program funding, call for projects um funding. Okay. So staff presented an opportunity for a multi-jurisdictional bike sharing program with the city of Burlingame on May tenth and the city council authorized the city manager to issue a joint RFP to receive proposals from operators. During that May tenth um presentation, staff discussed an opportunity for grant funding. The San Mateo County Transportation Authority, ACR TDM program released a call for projects. And these um pro- programs promote transit and other forms of commuting to reduce the use of single occupancy vehicles. The maximum project award in the uh call for projects is two hundred thousand and that's what we are applying for. The grant requires a ten percent city match um funding, matching fund. And the grant was due, uh the application was due May twenty seventh, uh which we submitted. Uh the application also included four letters of support from the Millbury BPAC, commute.org, Silicon Valley Bicycle Coalition and the Citizens Environmental Council of Burlingame. Uh one other piece that's remaining is the application requires adoption of a resolution supporting the project and funding. So these bullet points on the slide are in the resolution. If you've had a chance to read them. Um, I think I've covered most of them, but just the highlight is that uh the grant amount we're requesting, the city's ten percent matching, that would be required. Uh it also requires a funding agreement. It specifies the funds are not to replace uh existing funds and that the project would start within one year. So those are the highlights. I'm happy to answer any other questions about the resolution or any other questions you may have. Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
No questions. I'll move approval. I'm sorry, Councilmember Schneider, sorry.
Councilmember Schneider.
Hi, thank you. I'm happy to second the Vice Mayor's approval. A quick update, Ms. Papajon. I did bring this over to Mayor Rico Medina in San Bruno. He um is working a different process because I don't want to slow down our process. But with luck, San Bruno somehow or another may be able to join us.
Excellent. I had, I will be presenting to the San Bruno BPAC on July thirteenth. And so that was the first step, at least for staff. So appreciate the introduction that you gave. And um I'm very excited to go meet with them and get their feedback as well.
Terrific.
Councilmember Holiver.
Thank you real quickly. Um the twenty thousand dollar city matches, that split with the city of Burlingame, or is that just our share?
Yeah, very good question. Yes, to um, to clarify, uh both the city of Burlingame and the city of Millbury are applying for a two hundred thousand, each are applying for two hundred thousand dollar grant. Um so we are applying separately so that we could each hopefully qualify for this award. So therefore each city would have a um ten percent or twenty thousand dollar matching contribution.
So how does that work if we're, I guess, potentially competing against them uh for, you know, limited uh pool of funding?
Yep, not, it's a good question. Thank you. When we uh, we had a pre-application interview with the Transportation Authority about the grant. Um Burlingame also had one. We had to have one before we applied. And they recommended that we apply separately so that we could qualify for um a larger, you know, four hundred thousand rather than the just one, two hundred thousand if we applied together. Um and they really encouraged us to um work together on the application and they realize it's joint. So it was sort of conveyed to both the city of Burlingame and to me that um that they were going to look at them together. So obviously there's no guarantees, but our applications are very similar. So I would expect that they wouldn't fund one and not the other. Of course, I don't know, but that was.
They may fund a lower amount, maybe one hundred thousand each or something like that. I, I don't want to take up any more time, but thank you for clarifying that.
Absolutely.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. Can we have a vote, please?
Councilmember Snyder?
Yes.
Councilmember Holiver?
Aye.
Councilmember Fang?
Aye, and very, very well done team. Thank you so much.
Vice Mayor Pepin?
Yes.
Mayor Aliva?
Yes.
Item number fifteen is passed by a vote of five to zero.
Beautiful. That concludes our agenda. We have about fifteen minutes to go into some comments. I know there are a few people that um had some comments tonight. Um I kind of wanted to start, if you don't mind, council. On last Tuesday, May twenty fourth, we met at our regularly scheduled council meeting and we opened with concerns of the horrific mass shooting in Texas. Um and closed with thoughts and prayers of the families that lost loved ones. We are urged by former mayor Janet Fogarty during the meeting to act and do all that we could to control what we can, urging each level of government to take action and to stop this trend of violent assaults. The next morning, my neighbor of two young school age boys were leaving for school and as we normally do, we said good morning from our front yards. And she and her children were unusually upset and the routine of getting into the car to go to school seemed very uneasy. We, as we normal, uh she, she, the conversation we, we had of having a great day was replaced to, God, what happened if something was to happen at the daily routine of school that day? And we live in Millbury. Millbury is considered a safe community and known for the excellent schools. But as we all know, the event in Texas could happen anywhere. Later that day, my mother of eighty-three years old came for dinner to my house and she was not hungry and said she had no appetite. She was sick over the situation in Texas and we're all, and we all should be. What has come of this world? Mental health is being ignored and going untreated and then we have weapons. Adjourning our council meeting with thoughts and prayers was simply not enough. We, all of us, need to do more. And as a mayor of the city of Millbury, a mother myself, I grieve with the loved ones and the, in, in our society for the senseless deaths that occurred at Robb Elementary School. Mourning, however, is not a solution. And as elected officials and as community of mothers, fathers and families, we must come to up with a change. In our country, we just make policy changes in order to keep assault rifles out of our schools and communities. And this time must be right now. We grieve today with a measurable loss and promise that change will occur in the memory of these families. And while grieving, we must react, but this should never happen again. Let's come together, Millbury. Take a stance. Make outrage and action to our social media and letters to your congress, your state legislator. And to all those who some power to, that have some power to make change. We must take action to do all we can do to control what we can. We can urge each level of government to take actions to stop this trend of violent assault. Good government policy are those that protect people. To our federal government leaders, find compromise within your parties for gun policies. We thankfully are seeing some he, and hearing about some bipartisan deal on the narrow set of gun safety measures. But ending, but these years are taking forever in these congressional impasses. These party compromises would be only for the safety of all Americans. At a minimum, Congress should raise the age of which legal guns to be bought at twenty-one. Every day, there should be an accident waiting to happen and the statistics show this across our nation. Ghost guns and kit, gun kits shipped up from out of state to California buyers means guns are coming here. They cannot be traced and end up in the hands of those who cannot be trusted with them. The California legislature should be the ban of import, be on, on board to ban the import of ghost guns and shit, shit, gun kits shipped to California so they can confiscate it if they find out where they're being delivered. The manufacturers of assault weapons are intentionally manufacturing and advertising especially dangerous and lethal weapons used for mass murder, targeting their advertising to our young people. And in our own city, we have been delegated the police power of zoning. Our local government can create no gun zones around our schools, the way we've created drug-free zones around our schools. With that in place, if someone's found near a school with a gun and for probable cause, that person would be detained by the police before they fire on a weapon. Our schools need to be safe for our children. We just tried to pass a bond for infrastructure for our school buildings. This money could have ensured the proper safety issues that were addressed for anyone entering a campus. Now we're waiting to find if this measure passes and we'll have to continue to make this a priority. There is stranger danger and a gun and we have an, with that gun and stranger danger, we'll have another catastrophe. Greater training, police and emergency responders, active shooter situations must be included as a required courses for emergency responders. We must be done to provide, we, we must be done and to provide mental health services for all that need it. We are in a mental health crisis within our country. Can we please address this issue? No one thing can stop this evil. But we must do the things that we can do to make it harder to do it. We cannot put our children at risk. We cannot put our churchgoers at risk. We cannot put our people at risk every time they congregate for an event. Thoughts and prayers are well and good, but not enough. And if we all sit by and watch a tragedy unfold again and again without doing anything, then we are not doing the right thing. So with that being said, I feel better about closing a meeting with my comments on that. And I apologize for last regular. And I apologize for last regular meeting and just with thoughts and prayers. With that being said, we have our councilmember Feng who experienced a horrific situation this weekend as well. And Anders, you have to know that we had more than just thoughts and prayers going for you, too. There's people out there that are not treating people right. And I'll let, I'll let you tell your own story, Anders.
First of all, I thank you. Every single one. All my colleagues, mayor, everyone at the city hall. I'm grateful to be here today. And that sentence has a new meaning. Because it's a gift for me to be here again. I may not have been here. I, you know, I, I'm just kind of without words. I, I think I have said already, you know, whether it is on social media or in the people that I've spoken to. First, I, I, I must thank everyone at the city hall, all my colleagues, Madam Mayor, the comfort food was excellent. Vice Mayor as well, thank you so very much, Joe, and everybody who send your kind words and, and support. Everyone at the city hall, the edible food was excellent. They put a smile back on my children's face. Salboard, my neighbor's daughter, John Muniz. Just, I'm, you know, I, I know I shouldn't be stopping counting names because I, I know I'm going to forget some. And I think, but I had to do it. I think, I, I thank God every day for having this opportunity to be here to just give my comment and do what I can, my two cents for my community, by where I live, where my children grow up, where they thrive, where everyone thrives. I couldn't stop but ask myself this question. I, I I'm thankful, and I'm very confident that I will recover and survive this. But a bigger question and more worthy question here is this, it's not about me, it's about the community. What, when do our community recover from this? And what must we do today? What swift, decisive, and bold action must we take today in order to protect the most vulnerable of our community members? What legislative, what budgetary priorities must be, must we make today? So that these things don't happen to the next person? I mean, I, I still vaguely remember, I mean, obviously, everything happens in a flash. While I was down at the Lanzan Cave, when I was hit by that concrete block, there was a, an Indian-American family next to me with a little girl. It could have hit her. And she, it's more than likely won't survive from that. It did hit her. So, and when my family confronted the perpetrators, that's when they gave her this obscene and hateful hand gesture. I couldn't, I mean, I, I wanted to think that it was an accident. I never thought of myself as possibly could be a target for an attack. I, if I don't want to say, I never thought of myself as someone important enough for someone to target me to attack me. But I, I, it's it's beyond convincing to me after listening to my wife when she yelled at the perpetrator and told him to stop, and yet they've shown zero remorse. You're right, Madam Mayor, I mean, mental health is a huge problem. And, and we've got to deal with these issues, how, we cannot allow mental health become an issue in the countries to the point where we continue to lose law and order, loss of lives, and people getting hurt and bloodshed again. And then as I was explaining to my children, obviously, they're still in shock and in agony, and try to reason with all of this because how can they, I mean, can you imagine a fourteen, fifteen-year-old and that a woman who married to a man for over twenty years, just looking at him bleeding from the head because a concrete block hit him and it could have killed him? They still don't know if I would survive that injury at the time, obviously, but for them to even witness it and just kind of go through with this, how do they reason with what happened? And, and I thought about it over and over again, but we can't. And, and here's what I told them. I don't try to look at myself as a victim. I try to look at myself as God put this brick on my head because he wanted to wake me up and do something for my community. So that these things don't happen to anybody else again. That's a wake-up call. God wants to wake me up and do this, and be loud, and be assertive, and be demanding that we make changes so that to protect the community that we serve. So I, I obviously, thank you, Madam Mayor, for, you know, for the opportunity to, to speak out for this. And, and I also want to tell everyone in the community, don't be afraid to speak up about things that happen. Because only if you do, do we have enough data to, to protect the next person, to take action, to protect the, the person that you love, because it could be happening to them next. So in closing, I, I want to thank everybody. I'm glad to be here. And I, I, you know, I will continue to fight for justice and, and public safety because I believe that is truly is our number one priority. It's without public safety in a civilized society. We don't, we don't have democracy. And how do we protect our people? How do we have a thriving community? How do we have our collective success? So, thank you, Madam Mayor, thank you, everybody.
Councilmember Feng, we're glad you're here, too. Councilmember, Vice Mayor, is, well, I think it's eleven o'clock, and with permission from Councilmember Holiver and Schneider, I'd like to let Councilman, Vice Mayor Pepin close in honor of one of her mayors, one of her neighbors.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, we are very glad you're here, and it is community, and we need to come together. Random acts of violence are never acceptable, and we need random acts of kindness, more than anything, and more than ever before. So coming together as a community. Sadly, my neighbor Annie Myers passed away. She's been here for over forty years. She will be greatly missed. She and her husband operated the cakery in Burlingame for many, many years, which was sold prior to COVID. Good sale there. So my thoughts and prayers are with her husband and daughters and grandchildren. She, as I said, she will be greatly missed. So I'd like that we close in memory, memory of Annie Myers. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, and to everybody, have a great day, be safe, and please, let's do something about the community we live in. Thank you. Adjourn.